And if the clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Van Ness?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Excused.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here. Didn't you just call Councilmember Van Ness?
Oh, sorry, did I? Councilmember Sperry, did I do that one? You did not, but here, sorry. Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Thank you.
If you'll please stand and join me in the flag salute.
For pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. However, we do have some changes. So the first thing on the approval of the agenda is we need to reverse the order of the business agenda items. So they are as follows. First is transient-oriented development district. Second is the business incubator update. Third is neighborhood transportation plans. And fourth is road standards, and this is due to consultants who are to be present. All right. There is also another change.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, add a motion to the agenda as well.
Fine.
Okay, and the motion is I move to authorize and direct the city attorney's office to perform all actions necessary to implement the enforcement of Section 3.1 of the Frontier franchise agreement.
And I'll second that. So there is a motion in front of us, and we probably should deal with that motion. So is any further discussion on the motion? Does everybody understand what it is?
And Your Honor, just for clarification, it's to add it to the agenda. It's not to vote on the motion itself.
So did you have any idea where you want it on the agenda?
I'd like, we could do it right after the consent agenda if you'd like.
We can do that. Okay, right after the consent agenda, this one it'll be. Okay, so then we're going to approve the agenda if there are no objections as modified. Hearing no objections, the agenda will stand approved as modified. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. And this is, September is the month, National Recovery Month, and we join with the Voices for Recovery, visible, vocal, and viable. There's, is anybody here to receive this proclamation? So I'll just go ahead and read it into the record. Whereas mental and/or substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve a healthy lifestyle and lead to rewarding lives and recovery. And whereas by seeking help, people who experience mental and/or substance use disorders can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness. And whereas the focus of National Recovery Month this September is to celebrate their journey by spreading the message that behavioral health is essential to overall wellness and that prevention works and treatment is effective and people recover. And whereas mental and/or substance abuse disorders affect people of all ethnicities, ages, genders, geographic regions, and socioeconomic levels. And whereas individuals who experience a mental and/or substance abuse disorder feel isolated and alone, yet every year millions of Americans experience these conditions. And whereas we need to make more people feel like recovery is possible, and they need to know that help is available. And whereas these individuals can get better both physically and emotionally with the support of a welcoming community. Now therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor, City of Kenmore, Washington, on behalf of the city council hereby proclaim September 2015 to be National Recovery Month in the City of Kenmore, and I urge all community members and organizations to become change agents to help make recovery possible by offering support to those experiencing mental and/or substance use disorders. Together, we can help others realize the promise of recovery. Next item on agenda then is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your opinions that are important to you and to the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Will the clerk please call the first person?
John Croft?
My name is John Croft from Shoreline. I had a, for four years, a shop here in Kenmore. And I noticed out here that we have four lanes, actually six lanes, if traffic possible, but two of those six are used by buses currently. And if you go to the sound transit, they're going to take three of those six lanes. So it's going to really cut down the ability to move. It's going to be a disaster. So the bus, a single bus stop, 67 people in these buses. So you can, if you have this note, you'll be able to read it. I just want to indicate that it's, you're not getting your money's worth out of the bus system or the rail system that you think you might be getting. It's going to be a disaster. And the numbers are there for you to go over, and I'd like to be able to let you ask me questions if you have a chance, because I can answer questions better than I can speak out what my ideas are.
Thank you, Mr. Croft. This is not two-way dialogue.
No dialogue?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Modak?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Modak. This is my first time ever speaking at a city council meeting. I'm an attorney, and I'm a mother of two young children. And I'm here on behalf of myself and the Nelson Garden Homeowners Association regarding crosswalks on 195th. It is very fast. And I've talked to several citizens who've lived there their whole life, and they told me it used to be the street where they used to speed down, and there's a hill. And I've contacted the city a couple times and just been told that the city doesn't like speed bumps, stop signs, et cetera. So I would like to see what we could do to resolve that. Because we have little kids that like to go across. There's a new big development, the Wind South Meadows. They put in 80 houses, and so we walk there every day. And I'm very encouraged to hear that there's, I believe, crosswalks going in somewhere on 195th, I think, going on when you walk from our neighborhood to Kenmore Elementary. So I am encouraged to hear that. But from 195th on 77th Place, we would like something. Thank you.
Thank you, Flomek.
Elizabeth Mooney?
Elizabeth Mooney, 593 Ford Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore. I called the Department of Ecology today. And so you may already know this, but I'm disappointed in the Department of Ecology. And that's, I think, consistent with what you all wanted and our staff had asked for, which was trying to find the source of the contaminants in North Lake, Washington, the dioxins in particular. So I'm just letting you know, I'm, you know, citizens have been trying to get the Department of Ecology along with the City of Kenmore writing letters to say, "Find the source, fund it." Talk to Mara O'Brien today. And my understanding is this isn't going to happen this year. It's not going to happen next year. So that leaves us with toxins in Lake Washington, children at the shoreline, barges continuing, and people eating the fish that they catch. And then you might say to yourselves, at least I said to myself, "Well, what about the signs that are at Logg Boom Park from the Department of Eco," sorry, Department of Health? So I also called the Department of Health, and I'm not sure if you got an email. I meant to forward it to you. If I didn't, I'm here to tell you. They are not planning to address their outdated advisory from 2012. So again, now that we know that there are dioxins out there from January's report from the Army Corps that's out in the navigation channel where the barges go, I'm deeply disappointed that I ever even contacted Department of Health, State Department of Health, because they're not even planning to come here. So I sent that information off to Jerry Palet, our state representative. And hopefully now the woman who's in charge over there at Department of Health, maybe she'll give our Kenmore situation some attention and maybe get some information off so that families with small children can at least go down to the park on the shorelines and know what, at least the people in Seattle, know about Gas Works Park. If there are toxins, I think the families deserve to know full disclosure. And so I don't know if you all could do something about it, but if you could chime in, work together, I just think our city deserves to have full disclosure, just like the folks in Seattle do. And I'm sad that the State Department of Ecology hasn't worked along with our legislative agenda at getting the, finding the source of the dioxins.
Thank you, Mrs. Mooney.
There's no one else sign up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you very much for your comments. Ms. Flomek, can, Mr. City Manager, can you talk with her or have somebody talk with her about the crosswalks?
You betcha, yeah.
On 195th? That'd be great. Mr. Mooney, thank you for your comments, and we will continue to work on our legislative agenda, which is to encourage ecology to find the source. So thank you for your comments. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Move, Dan, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda. Do we want to add your motion here before the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Great. So if you will restate your motion.
Motion is I move to authorize and direct the city attorney's office to perform all actions necessary to implement the enforcement of Section 3.1 of the Frontier franchise agreement.
And I will second that. So any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think the whole reason for the motion, as most of you know, or all of you know, is that Frontier has consistently been, has failed to uphold their end of a franchise agreement. It's really, it's really that simple, and they've shown a complete disregard for wanting to work with us, too. And so I think those two reasons alone are the reasons that I'm advocating that we do anything we can to either get them to perform or pursue damages.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, please.
Just provide a little background for the people present and for the record. The city council approved transferring a franchise agreement for cable television service from Verizon to Frontier in December of 2009. In doing that, Frontier took on all aspects and all obligations from the franchise agreement that had been originally developed with Verizon. That included, and the point that we're discussing now, making cable service available from their company to the entire city by September or late August of 2011. At this point, and at the point that they took over the franchise, Verizon had built out the facilities for pretty much the northern part of the city, north of the Spamish River. And very little, if any, has been accomplished since the time of that franchise agreement. So we were having a similar discussion with you about a year ago for proceeding with enforcement actions. That did take place. And Don Rayton of our city attorney's office is working with us on this issue.
Thank you. And the city attorney's office is seeking authority and direction from this council to go forward with the enforcement procedures identified in the franchise. And that's really it. I have, I'm here if you have any questions, but otherwise we would request that authority.
Any other comments, questions? I guess I share the frustration of some of those on the council and the community that their total disregard for our community, so. If there's no more discussion, will the clerk please take the roll on the motion for us?
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding a development agreement with Main Street Partners for the commercial portion of Kenmore Village, Spencer Square. Mr. Hampson?
Your Honor, if I may, I'd like to just kind of get a little bit of background for, before Brian Hampson and Andrew Bauer give a presentation on this. This was discussed, this draft franchise or development agreement was discussed a week ago at the July 13th city council meeting. At that time, we presented to some key or major deal points that are going to be in the development agreement. A week ago, we did not have a draft of the development agreement for you to review. We do now, and that's, it's in tonight's packet. Also, at the council meeting on the 13th, Main Street Property Group, which is the development company that will be doing this development agreement with, they also came in front of you and presented to you their plans for the project. So tonight is hearing number one of two hearings. The second hearing will be in one week from now, on July 27th. And at that time, you will be considering the agreement and voting on whether to approve it or not. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Brian and have Brian give you an update on what's happened, especially in the last few days, what's happened since the July 13th city council meeting.
Thanks, Rob. Good evening, council. And my name is Brian Hampson, Development Services Director. And I have Andrew Bauer, our planner, with us tonight to discuss this public hearing and answer any questions that you may have. But I'd like to explain first that there was a couple revisions to the packet that went out last Friday, and I put those in front of you on your dais, and I gave a copy to the city clerk. We made some modifications to a recommendation letter and the agenda, or excuse me, the development agreement. And I'll, we'll go over those as we go through it tonight. But I'd like to start with discussing the actual property and the different parcels that are involved. So the Kenmore commercial, the Kenmore Village commercial property consists of seven different parcels. And as you guys know, and many know, the city owns the post office parcel. And we sold the Kenmore Camera parcel to Kenmore Camera in 2013. And recent, most recently, we sold two parcels to Main Street. And those are parcels B and D. And those are considered phases A and B and C, which we'll explain more in a second. They do have a option to purchase another parcel, parcel C, which is phase D, which if they do purchase, they'd have to have a lease with a sit-down restaurant. And we'll discuss those phases with you more tonight, too. So the development agreement, it allows departures from the codes and regulations, and also requires a public benefit as a trade-off. The development agreement was requested by the purchaser of the property, Main Street Property Group, in the purchase and sale agreement. And before voting on a development agreement, we must have a public hearing. And in this case, which will discuss why we need to have two public hearings. Actually, I'll explain that right now. Two public hearings are required if you're deviating from uses, residential densities, floor area ratios, limitations, or maximum building height. And in this case, Main Street Property Group is proposing to deviate from the maximum building height. And most recently, we made a code revision to our development agreement code section that requires the council's decision as a majority plus one. So at least five of seven council members have to decide on the final decision. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to discuss the site plan and the SEPA permits.
Thank you. So the other component of all of this before you tonight is the site plan and the SEPA review. SEPA is, as many of you know, the State Environmental Policy Act review. So that's the environmental component or environmental review component associated with the project. So in instances when there's a development agreement, the staff still conducts our site plan review and our environmental review as we would with any other project. However, the site plan essentially goes to you in the form of, or in conjunction with the development agreement in the form of a recommendation. And the site plan and final environmental determination only go into effect upon council authorizing the development agreement to be executed. And yeah, with that, I'll let Brian talk to you about the departures.
So before we get started, I want to show you the different phases on the parcels so you'll know what we're talking about when we're speaking of phases. So the Phase A is considered a commercial building. And I'll circle with my mouse. Can you guys see this on your screens? So this parcel is Phase A. It's a commercial building. It was previously thought to have been a fitness building. And right now, we're not sure about what the future use is going to be. But this is Phase A. Phase B would be the underground parking for the mixed-use building, which is directly east of Kenmore Camera. And Phase C is the structure on top of the parking structure on top of Phase B. Originally, the developer thought that they may want to construct the parking garage before continuing on with the rest of the building. But as we know it now, Phases B and C are going together. Phase D is the future restaurant. And of course, these two parcels here are the future Town Green and Community Building. And the post office, which is not part of this development agreement, is directly west of the Kenmore Camera property. Most of these were, if not all, were discussed with you and pointed out to you last week, but I wanted to go over them again with you and give you an opportunity to comment on them, or also the public to comment. But Main Street is proposing to pay their impact fees at the building permit issuance rather than the certificate of occupancy. Our code currently is written that they would pay 25% of the impact fees at issuance and 75% at occupancy. Main Street is agreeing to sponsor Town Greens, excuse me, Town Green events each year. These would be events such as music, music or movies at night, other things that the city might be interested in letting them do. Along 68th Avenue Northeast, Main Street will construct and install enhanced building facade features to improve the look and design of the buildings. And will also install wayfinding signage and maps showing amenities such as nearby complementary designations and parks, trails, and jogging routes. This will probably be part of the commercial Phase A building, the commercial building. Because, well, I'll get to that in a second. But anyway, so Main Street's also proposing to design and re-stripe 68th Avenue between Northeast 181st and 182nd on both sides of the street to allow for on-street parking. Main Street's agreeing to pay for and construct the new driveway interest entry on the intersection, on the north side of the intersection of Northeast 181st Street and 67th Avenue. The city is currently has designs in place, and so they would be using that design to construct. If Main Street does go forward with the optional sit-down restaurant property, they agree to complete the western edge of the Town Green. Currently, it's just hydro-seated with grass, and we're not sure exactly how that treatment's going to match up with their property. And so they are going to improve that area. Main Street's agreeing to demolish the buildings on parcel B and D by October 1st, 2015, where the purchase and sale agreement only requires them to demolish the structural, the structure on parcel D, which is the area where the phases B and C are going by October 1st, 2016. They're going to, Main Street, that is, is going to install water and sewer utility lines under the Town Green parcel by October 1st of this year, 2015. They're agreeing to grade and compact the soils and dirt for the Town Green site by October 1st, 2015. The departures that they're asking for, again, is the maximum building height. Here is one change that, from the original packet that we've added. We've received the final building height or the final proposed building height from them, which is 75 feet, eight inches. And that's measured from the average existing grade. So basically, you put a box around the building. You average out the midpoints of those four sides, and then you can, you get the heights from there. So the 75 feet, eight inches is below 68th Avenue. So it's probably going to be about 72 feet height on 68th Avenue. And from the down, you know, down below from the parking level, it's going to be in the range of 85 feet tall. They are asking for deviations from the upper-level stepbacks. Stepbacks are required on buildings over two stories in height, and those are, I do believe that the requirement is a six-foot stepback for every two stories. And so they're asking for no stepbacks along 68th Avenue. The horizontal building modulation, it's a minimum modulation depth of six feet required on large buildings and facades. Currently, we don't have enough information on the set of plans to understand how much those horizontal building modulations are. But they're asking to deviate from the code-specific requirement, but to do, to provide the horizontal modulation, it's just not to code. The commercial and restaurant building designs, I think Andrew's going to talk about this a little bit in a little while, but the applicant is requesting that the design of the review of those buildings comes later, when they know exactly who their tenants are. And we're, you know, if and when we get those and there are deviations from the code, the municipal code regulations, then that would trigger, to come back to you guys for, to come back to city council for review, comment, and approval. The landscaping, the developer is requesting deviation from the minimum landscaping requirements. Not necessarily the amount, it's just the location. So it's all, you know, the landscaping will be provided, the amount of landscaping will be provided. be provided as required by code, but there are deviations from the location. But we currently don't have that final plan showing the locations of the required landscaping. The developer is proposing to deviate from signage on the mixed-use building. Currently, they're asking for a sign that isn't fronting on 68th Avenue Northeast, where our code requires wall signs to face the street. You know, that sign is facing 181st, so it's on the south side of the mixed-use building, but it is not going to exceed 10% of the south facade. They've also requested a 70-square-foot projecting sign, which is blade sign, along 68th Avenue. Our code currently, our code is written right now allows a six-square-foot blade sign. It will be internally lit.
Brian, you said six square feet. I thought it was 12 square feet that's allowed for a blade sign.
It's, right, 12 square feet if it's unlit or externally lit, six square feet if it's internally lit. And this sign will be internally lit.
Oh, okay. Also, we just received the drawings for these signs last Thursday, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we've been scrambling to review them and looking over. And Andrew Bauer and I were reviewing the plans just a very short time ago. And just for clarification, I believe they're proposing two blade signs. Is that correct, Andrew? And they're both approximately 70 square feet.
Right.
So one blade sign would be at the southeast corner of the building, and the other blade sign would be at the northeast corner of the building. And I believe both blade signs are shown in your packet towards the back.
I should show those signs. Let me pull that up. I'll. This is the sign on the south facade, the wall sign. It's only showing a portion of the building, but it does continue for another 100-plus feet. So it's a little bit, it's a lot larger than what's depicted here. This is one of the blade signs. And this is, I can't tell what side or which area this is, the south or the north. Well, it's the southeast corner.
Yeah, this would be the southeast corner, closest coming, as you're going north on 68th.
So the signs would project from the building three foot, three inches and be 20, 20, 20 foot, three inches tall, and for a total of 44 and a half feet from the sidewalk. This is a building canopy signage, which is allowed by code.
On page 124 of that 254 in the same packet, there's a blade sign on Spencer 68. Is it similar to that or is it bigger?
It's bigger.
That's actually a monument sign that we're going to talk about later. It's shown sideways, but.
It shows sort of like it's.
Yeah, it looks, yeah, it looks like a blade sign, but I believe it's a monument sign that's just shown sideways.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sorry.
I have a question. So this next one that you have up now, so that's obviously not just the same as the other in terms of the signage. One's Evergreen and one's Spencer Square. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So southeast would be facing that way.
Southeast would be facing, you'd be looking, standing at the southeast corner, looking north.
I'm totally lost anywhere.
Like standing at the corner of the plaza at City Hall.
Looking that way.
So the first blade sign would have a parking, a P symbol for parking underneath it with an arrow pointing up. And so as you're coming up 68th Avenue, that's the sign you'd see first.
Okay.
And then as you approach the other end of the north building, the parking sign would have an arrow pointing to the, to the inside of the building.
Got it.
So with this depiction, you're facing south now, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I get that. Okay. Thank you, that helps.
I had a brief conversation with the president of Main Street Property Group a little while ago, and he asked me to pass on that the importance of these blade signs to Evergreen Health. They put a pretty high priority on these particular signs, and a committee of them at Evergreen Health approved and recommended this sign package.
This is a pretty sizable departure from our design standards, our sign code. If an internally lit sign, that's a blade sign like this, can be six square feet, and we're going to 72 square feet. Pretty significant difference.
It is significant. Let me point out real quick, these, they're calling these backlit signs. So that would, they would be allowed to go 12 square feet, but it is still a significant increase.
I thought the internally lit signs, it's the backside of the side you look at. I mean, it's a box that's lit inside that you will, that glows both directions, right? Am I misinterpreting what it is? That's an internally lit sign, which you specified, you said was six feet.
Yeah, if it's internally lit, it is six feet, correct?
And my concern is, are we setting the precedent here that, you know, it's a big departure from, from our code? And either we should change the code or, you know, I think we're asking for lots of requests for exceptions to the code, especially when it's this much. And that's, what is it, 12 times the area?
Depends on how you're measuring it, yeah.
Yeah, well, 72 versus six.
Okay.
Yeah, it's six feet.
Councilmember Herbig.
I just need to say for the record also, I'm not a huge fan of our sign code as it is. I think our signs, I think we allow too many signs in too many places, and I'm not a fan of departing, especially for something that's going to be two stories tall. I wouldn't want to live in one of the units right next to this sign outside my windows. And I do worry just about blight, visual blight on the street. So I'm not a huge fan of this departure. I think they could get the same sort of visibility at street level with monument signs if they were creative about it. I think this is a fairly uncreative solution. And I think Evergreen's getting quite a bit of visibility with that sign up at the top of the building. That'll be visible all the way down to Taco Time or further south, so.
Okay, keep going.
Moving on, the building entrance, Phase A, which is that commercial building, because of the lay of the land, they're unable to practically provide a main entrance on 68th Avenue. So they're asking for deviation to put their main entrance towards the parking lot. And however, they're going to provide a secondary entrance on 68th that really has the look and feel of a main entrance. The pedestrian walkways, they're deviating slightly from the code. The code requires buildings with, that are greater than three stories in height, to have an eight-foot-wide minimum width walkway and 12 feet average width throughout. They are proposing a walkway eight to 18 feet, which doesn't deviate from the minimum width requirement. However, they are not meeting the average width of 12 feet throughout the, throughout the site, more in the range of 10 feet would be, is what they're proposing on the site. In addition to the gives and takes between the city and Main Street, Main Street will be getting a 10-year vesting on their site development permit and the development agreement. The easement, they will also be getting an easement to install water and sewer utilities across the Town Green parcel. They'll be getting impact fee vesting. They'll be vesting to the current impact fee rates, and if we do increase those in the future, they'll be vested to our current amount. As I mentioned, the development agreement is good for 10 years, but they do have an opportunity to extend it for another five years if it's approved. They're deviating, or they're asking for elimination of the minimum parking spaces. But currently, their current proposal with the mixed-use building and the commercial space and the sit-down restaurant, it works. They have enough parking on their site. However, it could change based on the size and the use of the future commercial building. For example, if it was a fitness building or something. The change here was, again, Thursday afternoon, we added on to the additional signage on Spencer 68 to be part of this development agreement, but that has been edited to not be included.
Yeah, if I can just clarify, that, that request came in late last week when I was out of the office. Further discussion today, we are recommending that that not be approved. Brian, do you want to take them to that slide just to show what they're asking for? So, so is that a blade sign or is it a monument sign?
It's a blade sign.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying it was a monument sign. So they're, were they also wanting a monument sign? Or is it just a blade sign?
It's just a blade sign.
Okay. And so they're wanting a blade sign of how big?
Seven. Seven by three, so 20, 23, 24 square feet. This would be located near the intersection of 68th Avenue Northeast and 182nd Street on the current building C.
So because this is a separate project, and also because it was not a deal point discussed a week ago, I'm recommending that it be taken off consideration for this development agreement. But if they wanted to come back and amend the development agreement for Spencer 68, you could consider that at a future date.
Didn't we turn down the blade signs on Spencer 68? And we did that development agreement? Wasn't that an ask as part of that?
That, they did not ask for sign code deviations in the development agreement for Spencer 68.
Remembered talking about it, though.
Yeah, I think they wished they had, but that did not come up.
What, the other question I have is, what's the typical width of a billboard? I mean, this looks like a vertical billboard at 23 feet high, maybe a little narrower, but we've been complaining about billboards in town.
I think a typical billboard would be much larger than this, but, because this is, how long is it?
23 feet, 23 feet something.
Three, yeah, so this is only three feet in width.
Right.
So, you know, this wide, but yeah, your point's taken.
What about this, okay, never mind. Spencer 68, one was seven feet wide and 23 feet high. Twice as big. And we're not voting on, are we voting on this tonight, or is this informational?
This is a public hearing to listen to public comment.
Councilmember Smith.
Thanks, excuse me, thanks, Brian, for the information. I have a question on number five on the very last page. And, excuse me, this is regarding the elimination of minimum parking requirements. And I remember when we talked about this last week, it came up, because I raised the issue about if they change anything or deviate from code on those other two commercial parcels, that would have to come back to the council for approval. But with this addition of this sentence, that basically tells me they could deviate further from the parking requirements, and that would not have to come back to council. Am I interpreting that correctly?
You, yes, you are. The current properties, the sit-down restaurant property and the commercial building properties are part of this development agreement. So the parking and landscaping and other features on the site are part of this development agreement. But what isn't part of it is the, the outside design of the building, the materials and everything. So if they come back later, at a later time, with a proposal for a building that doesn't meet the downtown design standards on the building materials, that would be coming back to you for discussion and approval. But if they do come back and they can meet all of the downtown design standards, it would just be a site plan review, or excuse me, it's not a site, it's just building plan review.
So when they had the parking study done, did they do that with their set of assumptions? Did they have that those two additional commercial properties would be built out to the max, the commercial and the, the building that is on the east side of the property?
Their current traffic study included a 20,000-square-foot commercial building and a 5,000-square-foot restaurant.
And that's in addition to the six-story building?
Right.
So it included three buildings.
Okay, so that was all factored in, in that parking?
Yeah.
Study, and that they were below the minimums on that? Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. I just want to make sure we don't approve this, then all of a sudden get into a situation where they're building something other than we thought, and we don't have the, they don't have to meet any additional parking requirements.
So they could, like, the, probably the building that has the most potential for being larger than 20,000 square foot is that south building, or what we were calling the fitness building at one time? So right now, we're assuming, the parking study assumes 20,000 square feet, and that's about a one-story footprint. But what they could do is come in for a two- or a three-story building that's double or more the square footage. And they could, under this current agreement, they could do that without needing additional parking concessions from the city.
Well, I don't, I, you know, I don't have a problem with it, except for, like any development agreement, it's the, when you don't know something, it's hard to give your stamp of approval, and now we have the specifics. And I would say, I don't have a problem with the way it is now, but if it's something larger than what, what was anticipated, then I think it should at least come back to us to make sure that that is reasonable. And, and it's supposed to come with a public benefit. So if we're deviating it, deviating from our code that much, in that much greater of a capacity, then there should be a public benefit that is consistent with that additional deviation. So that, that's my thought on that one. On the blade side, I wanted to mention that, you know, maybe that there is a middle ground there, instead of just an all or nothing. 70 square feet's pretty big, to think of three and a half by 20 feet. Maybe it could be like a maximum of one story rather than two, or, you know, something like a 30 or 35-square-foot blade sign. And there is a benefit also by, it had a parking symbol on there. So if somebody's driving up the street, just to know there's a parking garage there on that blade sign does serve a, I think, a public benefit a little bit by having that known. And then, the only, oh, the last thing, on the landscaping deviation, since we don't know what that is, is that an administrative thing then that is approved? That doesn't come back to the council, I assume?
That's what we're proposing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Herbig.
So what I'm hearing is that, on one hand, they could theoretically not meet parking minimums if they blow up the Phase A building into something bigger than is anticipated now. And on the other hand, now, and on the other hand, what they're offering to us as a public benefit is they'll restripe our street to provide more parking for them. I don't really, I'm not sure if I actually see that at the end of the day as a public benefit, if it's going to primarily, I mean, the, the parking will primarily serve them, but it sounds to me like they're trying to mitigate their own lack of parking on our right-of-way. And that concerns me a little bit, and I, I'm not sure if, it's starting to make me question viewing that re-striping offer as a benefit to us, as a, as a trade to us. And to the, to the signs, again, I, I still think they could probably get away with a lot of this on-ground level monument-style sign to be a lot classier and a lot less cluttery.
If I could, I wanted to clarify one thing real quick. The on-stri- onsite, or, excuse me, on-street parking along Sixty-eighth Avenue Northeast is going to be limited to a time, and that time is between six a.m. and six p.m., is two hours a time, but, so it does allow for turnover of parking, so I don't know how much the residents will be able to use it as much as the businesses or, you know, City Hall customers.
We have actually yet to determine the actual hours of the limited parking, but we do plan on coming back at a later date to propose time-limited parking for the downtown. But one thing I want to clarify is, they're not necessarily proposing on-street parking as the addition, as the benefit to offset being able to not comply with the minimum parking. It's the other benefits that they're providing in the project, such as constructing the entrance and the other things that were mentioned in the development agreement that are offsetting things like that or providing the benefit. The, the other thing for the striping of the street, they're, they're going to be required to provide a full-width asphalt overlay fronting their properties, Spencer sixty-eight and Spencer Square, and when you do that, you have to stripe it. And so whether it's striped for on-street parking or no-on-street parking, this really is at the city's direction, and they have to pay for the paint anyway, so it's not really a big give on their part that, that they're providing, striping for on-street parking, because they're, they're going to have to stripe it anyway.
I, I just wanted to clarify one thing with the, the size of the commercial building also. So, under the SEPA review, the environmental review, they're capped at twenty thousand square feet, so that's one item that could be reopened if they wanted to go over the twenty thousand square foot building size. And in meeting with Main Street a couple of weeks ago, they were kind of presenting this twenty thousand square foot building as a maximum scenario for them, and, you know, the, there was a couple of different earlier proposals that had less than twenty thousand square feet, so kind of for future planning purposes, I think they're putting the twenty thousand square feet on the table as a maximum, and then there would be potential mechanisms to kind of reopen that, should they want to go much bigger and then kind of blow up the parking and have all these spillover effects.
Can, if you don't mind, can I ask you a question about that specific issue? Just, okay.
Go ahead.
It's just about the parking. Can you, Andrew, can you tell me, is that, is that the same parking requirement regardless of the use of that building?
The, the parking requirements are going to change based off of the, the use, and I didn't review the, the traffic study, so that'd be Zach Richardson that reviewed that, but, so I'm not sure on how they kind of looked at the use of the site.
I can speak to that. They actually set it up as a gym, which is one of the heavier parking uses, so it, it is currently set up to be a gym. It's still based on the older information, so it's probably, as long as the square footage stays the same, it's pretty close to a worst-case scenario.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Regarding the parking, at, at one side of me says, this is a blank check we're giving them, and they could do something with that remaining property that needed much more parking than, than what they have, and in which case then, if they didn't have that parking, all those customers would be spilling over into other parking nearby, like Kenmore Cameras and so on, and out onto the streets. But the market will limit that, and a retailer's not going to go into a space that doesn't have enough parking for the number of customers that he anticipates. So I would think that, that, you know, they wouldn't, they wouldn't put a, a massive three-story physical fitness place in, on top of that footprint for that south building that would require several hundred parking spaces for all the people that'll be running on treadmills in there. It just, the site just wouldn't bear that kind of traffic, and they wouldn't get the tenant. So I think the market will take care of it. The other comment I had was regarding the signs, and I think Lori briefly mentioned it, that sign goes up the most, the length of the building, and if you had one of those rooms on the corner, your bedroom would probably be well-lit throughout the night. And that's another thing that the market will drive, maybe they can't rent those spaces if they've got that bright light going in there from the sign. Are there hours of illumination on the sign, or is it twenty, you know, all darkness, all non-daylight hours?
It wasn't mentioned, but I would assume that it would be all-
All night, yeah, probably.
Councilmember Januski.
My opinions on the signs, I don't mind blade signs, but those are really big. It'd be nice to see them smaller. Wondering if maybe they could get it down to one instead of two, but I'm not sure if they can.
I've been by the number of their properties in the last week or so, and they're pretty consistent with the signs, and I don't really find them that objectionable. They're done in good taste, and they're, it's not something bright that is going to make daylight in a neighboring window. But, anyway, just my two cents.
So if I can help this conversation along, maybe I can propose something that is direction from you that we can bring back next week. One is, what if we did go back to them and cut the blade signs in half? And number two, to address Councilmember Smith's concern about additional parking demand, what if we said that if the Phase A building is bigger in square feet than the parking study assumed, then, and needed additional parking above what the, above what the parking study assumed, then that would also need council approval?
I, I think that's great, that's actually exactly what I wrote down, just to know that we have a maximum there, so I think that sounds good to me.
So those are two ideas, I think those are the only concerns I've heard, unless Councilmember Herbig had something on, on-street parking. Okay.
Well, first of all, on the, on the blade signs, maybe for comparison purposes, have some of the pictures and the sizes of the other buildings. For example, the Slater, I mean, one of the problems they have is Evergreen Health and Spencer Square, unless they want to make an actual square, they're very long, so somehow they have to get that all on there. But, for example, the Slater one sixteen, they have blade signs on them, and frankly, I didn't even notice them until I started looking at blade signs when we were looking at the property here, so that would be really interesting to see what those sizes are, because they, they really, in that particular case, they were, they were very small compared to the building.
Yeah, what we can do is provide you a picture of the Slater one sixteen sign with a, with a person standing in front of it, to give you perspective, because that is a, a bigger sign, I bet it's close to what they're proposing for this.
Yes, perspective, yeah.
Actually, a few weeks or months ago, Brian and I tried that, where I was standing under the sign at Slater one sixteen, and he took a picture of me, but it was kind of in the afternoon, and it wasn't a very good picture, so maybe we'll try to get a better picture.
I'll do that tomorrow when I'm over there.
Do you know, did Waffle do anything with their Six Oaks sign?
Yeah, they, they had to approve sign code changes, sign deviations for Six Oaks.
But they, using the blade signs there too?
I, are they? Yeah, yeah, and I don't know what they're-
It's not noticeable, I mean, they're not, you don't look that out of place, I mean.
Yeah, in my opinion, they're not bad-looking signs, it's the concept of the departure and how large of a departure it is.
City Manager.
The other thing, too, on the signs, it looks like, one of the questions that we have are the lighting, you know, how exactly are these going to be lit? You know, maybe is it just the parking, little P for parking going to be the lit part, or is it, you know, that kind of thing, because that might be kind of interesting to see.
Brian, you can find that out?
Yes.
Okay.
So my hearing, well, I guess, Rob made a recommendation to cut the signs in half, you're talking the amount and the area? So if it's seventy square feet per sign, are we recommending thirty-five foot per sign and one sign?
I'm okay with two signs, I suppose.
See, I, I mean, I'd like to see some, some of those examples of the current buildings and whatever, but-
I think we're supposed to have a public hearing on this, too, but just, I'll weigh in now, I think that because the parking is going to basically be behind the building and hidden, that, you know, having those two-directional signs, plus there's both the retail, or, excuse me, the residential and the healthcare provider, so I would think you would need, need both of those, just to, to get people to the right spot to, to park, so.
So two-
The ask would be to get half the size of each sign, not half the number of signs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And also, rather than just a picture of the other building, could you do the picture and the dimensions of those signs? There's a numerical difference in the size.
All right, anything else? Councilmember Januski.
Brian, you had a, one of the pictures of this, this project had a blade sign on it, on one of the color renderings, can you find that in there? Is that in your presentation or not?
Yes.
It goes, yeah, somewhere in, right, up, go right back where you were.
There's a, oh, this one.
Go down, right there, so there's a picture with the blade sign on there that doesn't look horribly huge.
I, I think we'd have to verify that that's the right proportion, yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to really tell, we don't have dimensions on this, and-
It's really about the proportions more than the numbers.
And plus, these are pretty mature trees, you know, they're first going to be pretty small, so it might be a few years till they're grown this tall.
Another question, these buildings are not going to be set back from the sidewalk like Spencer sixty-eight is.
That's correct, these are going to be-
So these signs would be hanging over public right-of-way, is that right? Over the sidewalk?
That's correct.
Thank you. So I declare the public hearing open to receive public testimony regarding a development agreement with Main Street Partners. What is the T? M S T T.
Not sure.
Main Street Partners Eleven LLC, for the commercial portion of Kenmore Village, Spencer Square. Anybody wishing to testify?
There's no one signed up, oh, okay.
Anybody wishing to be heard in the public testimony on the development agreement with Main Street Partners for the commercials? Mr. Leek, if you would be so kind as to sign up after, it would be appreciated.
I'd be delighted to do that, Mr. Mayor. William Leek, one-five-one-zero-two, Sixty-fourth Court, Northeast, Kenmore, nine-eight-zero-two-eight. I'm here not necessarily to, I wasn't expected to testify in this, but listening to counsel, I'd just like to compliment you on the questions that you're asking, but as a guy who's been around construction for forty years, throughout the Pacific Northwest, I drive a lot, I see a lot, I would encourage you to get those pictures, not just of one building the developer's put up, but multiple pictures. That rendering is pretty good. I'd also caution you about moving signs up and down, left and right, when those trees grow up, or if you're driving, I don't know if you've ever tried driving around someplace looking for a sign, and there's a big truck parked in front of it, you want the signs up. You also want good numbers on the buildings, nothing drives me crazier than trying to find a, an address, particularly a commercial building, and each city, I think, has its own codes to where they place those, and most of them are in the basement, it just drives me crazy. But you're asking the right questions, and I think those pictures are great, so if you can drive around, this is a developer that's pretty local, go see some Evergreen buildings, too. Redmond's a pretty high-class place, see what they've done. Drive out to Canyon Park on your way up to Mill Creek, in fact, there's a lot of medical buildings out of Mill Creek. It's well worth your time, there's nothing like boots on the ground looking at stuff. Drawings, they're okay for the planners, nothing against the planners, but get a look at that stuff. And this is, this is your big shot, so you need to get this one right. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. If I can get you to go sign up, that would be great. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard on, regarding the development agreement with Main Street Partners for the commercial portion of Kenmore Village, Spencer Square? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Declare the public hearing closed. Thank you very much.
So I think we have the direction we need. All right, thank you.
So, next item on the agenda is the review of transit-oriented development, the TOD district overlay, Ms. Bens, Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, Council. So I'm here this evening to give a refresher on transit-oriented development district overlay. Council held a public hearing in two thousand and ten, and at that time, delayed action on the proposal until the regional business zone project had been completed. And as you know, that project was completed, and then the council directed the planning commission to take a look at the boundaries of the overlay after they'd completed the regional business zone project. So that's why we're back right now, so we're here to kind of go over the planning commission recommendation on the boundaries, we're here to give you a refresher on what the TOD regulations would be, and then we're here to see if your direction on the planning commission recommendation on the TOD boundaries, and if you have any other substantive changes you would like to make. Based on that direction, we would then propose to bring a recommendation back to you probably September for a public hearing, because the changes to the boundaries are substantive, so you will need to have a second public hearing, and also, as it's been almost five years since you had your last public hearing, it probably makes sense to have another public hearing anyway. So Lori is now going to present a PowerPoint to kind of go over some of those points. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm going to run through this PowerPoint, it was actually developed several years ago, and then we've made some tweaks since then, so I'll try to do this quickly, and then we can answer any questions. So again, this is for a transit-oriented development proposal, it would be an overlay district. For those of you who don't know, transit-oriented development is public and private development supporting transit use by emphasizing pedestrian and transit access, clustering development, and mixing land use and activities. And as Debbie mentioned, the Downtown Task Force is the body that reviewed this proposal, acting similarly to the Planning Commission. They started looking at it in two thousand and eight, it was added to the docket in two thousand and nine. They held, the Downtown Task Force held their public hearing in two thousand and ten, as did the city council in the fall of two thousand and ten, and then the project was deferred, knowing that the regional business zoning project was coming forward to look at how the TOD and the regional business zoning changes might interact, and then looking at those boundaries became part of the two thousand and fourteen docket, so the Planning Commission took a look at it then and recommended some changes, and those were initially presented to you almost a year ago. So the purpose of the overlay is to reinforce the city's planned concentration of pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development. Again, the idea is to support transit, multimodal transportation options, including high-capacity transit. And the basic elements of the proposal are- Again, the idea is to support transit, multimodal transportation options, including high-capacity transit. And the basic elements of the proposal are to create an overlay district that is incentive-based. So in other words, a developer could choose whether to develop under the rules of the TOD district, or to develop using the current rules of the underlying zoning district. Incentives include the higher residential densities and lower onsite parking requirements. However, if you develop under the TOD district, you also have to provide public benefits, public pathways, you have to conform to design standards, a higher level of design standards. There are incentives to preserve mature tree groves, and you have to provide some level of affordable housing. So the zoning code proposal is before you. The comprehensive plan language is sort of already in place, so this does not really need a comprehensive plan amendment at this point, which is how it can come back to council, knowing that we've already adopted our comprehensive plan update for the year. As you may be aware, we've done several zoning changes since this came before you initially, and because of that, there was some reordering of the code. We've developed new land use definitions. So this would now become chapter 1829 of the municipal code. Previously, it was going to be inserted in another chapter. So to apply under the TOD district, you first of all have to be in the district, and we're going to look at the maps in a minute. You cannot do commercial-only development in the TOD. It has to be mixed-use. Residential is the critical component to TOD. However, you can do residential-only development in the underlying residential zones. So the district boundaries, there were a number of factors that the Downtown Task Force looked at in determining the boundaries that they initially recommended. One was proximity to transit. Certainly, they wanted to include the park-and-ride facility. They were trying to provide support for downtown Kenmore and minimize adjacency with low-density uses. They were interested in some proximity to natural features and promotion of redevelopment. So the planning commission looked at those rationales, looked at what they were doing with the regional business zoning, and they recommended a changed map. So this is the map originally recommended by the Downtown Task Force. This is 73rd. Here's the park-and-ride right here. It includes the Kenmore Square area, and then it went on the south side of 522 to pick up the plywood supply properties and some of the multifamily properties just to the east. This is the map recommended by the planning commission. They are recommending that the area south of 522 not be included in the TOD, and they are making that recommendation because, as you recall, the TOD requires that you cannot have standalone commercial development, and this was an area that they felt should be heavily focused towards jobs and additional economic development. So they basically kept the same boundary on the north side of 522, but they extended it to the east to pick up current areas of multifamily zoning. And I'm not sure that there's a lot of redevelopment potential in here, but they thought it was worth considering this. These are all within walking distance of 522. There's a series of transit stops along 522 in this area. So they felt that it was a better location for the TOD to preserve this area south of 522 for commercial standalone development, if that was the direction. So the land use has to comply, if you develop under TOD, you have to comply with the land use rules in the TOD chapter, and those are different from the underlying zone potentially. They're modeled more on the downtown commercial land uses. But the change that you probably sign your packet is that we've taken the new list of land uses. Do you remember, we, through the regional business zoning project, we took all those uses and consolidated them down into a single, like a 50-item list. We're recommending that the TOD use that new list. We hope eventually that all the zones in the city will use that list. So the land use, new land use definitions are being used. The land use promotes uses that attract pedestrian activity. They prohibit automobile-oriented uses, and they limit the commercial component in those underlying residential zones. Today, in those underlying residential zones, there are limits on square footages of commercial uses, and those have been brought forward into this recommendation as well. The density is a significant change. You have to have a minimum density, if you develop under the TOD, of 40 dwelling units per acre. The maximum is 120 dwelling units per acre. The existing densities in those zones range from R12, R18, R24, so 12 dwelling units per acre, 18 and 24 dwelling units per acre. There's some R1 included, and we can speak to that if you wish. That R1 is attached to parcels that have higher density against the street, and it was zoned R1 to protect critical areas. There could be no development in the critical areas, but you could transfer the density up against the street. 73rd is where that would sit. Downtown commercial density is 48 dwelling units per acre, as is the new urban corridor zone that this proposal would pick up. So you can see, being able to go to 120 dwelling units per acre is a significant incentive. That density range was consistent with the literature that the Downtown Task Force looked at, and as I mentioned, you would be required to provide some element of affordable housing if you developed under this scenario. So the maximum building height, you could go up to 65 feet. However, if you were within 50 feet of a single family, it would only be to 35 feet. And existing heights in the underlying zone, in those multifamily zones, the existing height is 60 feet. You can do up to 65 feet if you do mixed-use in downtown commercial, and the new urban corridor zone is 55 feet. So it's not a huge difference in terms of allowable height, but it would be an incentive. You, again, would comply with the downtown design standards, and the initial amendments included some changes to the downtown design standards, sort of a simplification and cleaning up the language to put it into a table format. That was taken care of in 2011, so those changes have been excised from this proposal. Parking, again, this was another incentive, would require one space per market-rate dwelling unit and 0.6 space if it was senior or affordable housing. The current range of parking is 1.2 to 2 parking spaces per unit, depending on the number of bedrooms. So again, a lower parking provision for residential, and for commercial, you could go to 75% of the minimum, but it, and then you also can do a further reduction if you're within a certain distance of transit. Some additional elements related to parking, on-street parking near the development could be included in your parking calculations. You can do shared parking, and if you do more parking than the minimum, then you have to put it in a structure, so a requirement for structured parking. And you have a maximum parking. You cannot exceed 100% of what the parking requirement is in the underlying zone. Pedestrian connectivity, this was a desire to have connections to transit facilities, and then in those critical areas, Swamp Creek, for example, you were to provide public access parallel to the water body, and then also a connection from that public access back to the right-of-way. And then another public benefit, protection of significant tree groves, if you, and they were, I think, thinking of the Kenmore Square property when this benefit was discussed. So there's a definition for significant tree groves. If you maintain large, significant trees in a grove, then you can get a bonus either of dwelling units or of parking, and then you have to protect that grove in perpetuity. So that's the significant tree grove bonus. For affordable housing, there's an incremental approach. Up to a certain point, you only have to provide, it's like a third of the units have to be affordable at medium income, and you can cap affordable units at 10% of the total units. But they also wanted to provide some really low, lower income, 50% of median income, I'm sorry. So this upper one was at 80 or 85%. This one was at 50%, and they wanted those 50% units to be no more than 1/3 of the affordable. So your affordable are capped at 10% of the total development, and within those affordable units, 1/3 could be 50% of median, so lower-income units. So they did this, and the requirements are lower as you get more and more density, because they were trying to encourage higher density. They felt that that made it workable. And Arthur Sullivan with Arch is here. He was here in the beginning to talk about affordable housing. So if we have questions about that, I probably will turn to him about this formula. And we tried, as we went through this version of the TOD, we tried to simplify the formula. It was very complicated, and we tried to simplify it as much as we could. It may still require a spreadsheet. For an applicant coming in, they would plug in their numbers, and it would spit out how much affordable housing, but again, no more than 10% of the total. To encourage projects to do this, if the density or the parking incentives weren't adequate, they said that for pioneer projects, which are new projects, the first projects coming in, the pioneers, they would make some additional concessions. One would be that for the first 100 bonus units, there would be a less restrictive definition for moderate income, and for parking for the first 100 bonus units, you could go to 0.6 parking spaces per unit rather than one space per unit. So, next steps. Today, we're talking about trying to provide a very quick overview of this proposal. I know many of you, this is the first time you've ever seen it. What we hope to do is get some reaction to that, and then, as Debbie mentioned, if you're interested in making some of these changes to the boundary, adopting the new uses, et cetera, then we would recommend a public hearing, and even, I suppose, if you weren't interested in making any changes from the original recommendation, the fact that it's been so long ago might warrant an additional public hearing, and then we would move on to adoption. And again, this is because there are not comprehensive plan changes here, it's not bound to that end-of-the-year deadline, but we hope to finish it up this year.
Questions, Councilmember Januski?
I'm one of the ones who hasn't seen this before.
Right.
I guess off the top of my head, for the pioneer projects, I'm not a huge fan of removing the, or reducing the affordable housing requirements on that, but I don't know all the discussion that went all to get there.
Right, and so I don't know if Arthur, you want to come up? Arthur Sullivan with Arch, I think. You know him, or maybe Debbie knows the answer.
Well, I think when, because this was such a radical change that could be allowed, I think it was sort of making, allowing the first person through the door, sort of the concessions to sort of be able to do the project. So that was one of the basic reasons for allowing a pioneer project and some additional concessions, because it is so different for Kenmore.
To add to that? This is something we found in areas around East King County. We've done, other cities have done similar provisions. It's primarily because it's introducing such a new use to an area. Now, with Spencer being done, maybe it won't feel like as much of a pioneer as it would have felt when we were first drafting this, so that may be a consideration in thinking about that provision, but you would not be the first to have done, quote, a pioneer. And your definition of affordability for the pioneers, I think, is still at, for rental development, I think, is still at 80% of median income. Other cities have been even a little bit higher. So I would say it would be a common, somewhat common practice that's been done when you're trying to introduce a new form into a market, and again, maybe a counter-consideration is, since now Spencer's moved forward, not quite as big a jump as it would have felt three years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Debbie, mayor?
Thanks. A little more explanation, if you would, on the percentage of affordable housing. Remember, the slide was saying 50, 1/3 of the affordable housing units would be at 50% of the King County median area income. Area median income, there we go. What would the other 2/3 be? Above 50% or below 50%?
Above, it's at 70%. So the way it worked when we worked with the commission is, the increment, as described in the slide, is for so many new bonus units, some, one of every three has to be affordable, and initially, it's affordable at moderate income, which for rental is 70% of median, and for ownership is...
8%.
80 or 85% of median. And then, once you get to a point where you're at 10% of the units are affordable at the moderate, if you're still going higher, the commission said, or this task force said, for every four more, you take one of those units and you bring it down to low income. So first, you get to 10% at the moderate level, and then if your bonus is so great that you're getting even more bonus units, you start using those bonus units to make some of the units affordable.
Could you explain what a bonus unit is?
Above what's allowed under the base density.
Right, so for example, if you had a project in the R, in a zone that allowed 48 dwelling units per acre, and you had one acre, 48 would be your allowable units. And then if you develop to 120 dwelling units per acre, for example, the bonus units would be the difference between the 120 units and the 48 units. Those are the bonus units.
Okay. Was there, I remember we had a discussion a couple of weeks ago, months ago, I don't lose track of time, about what we needed to address this affordable housing issue proactively, since we have so many trailer parks within the city, and if those get redeveloped, where do those people go?
Right.
And so this is...
This is...
This is an answer, part of the answer to that question. Taking that one step further, if the TOD actually included those trailer parks, like the one right here, then one could ensure that when that redevelops, it would have a certain amount of affordable housing in it. There is, unless it's in a TOD, we don't have any teeth in our ordinances to demand any affordable housing. Is that right? Would it be possible to extend this over to 68th?
The, I can say that the Downtown Task Force did not include the downtown. They felt that the downtown already had been carefully looked at and crafted, and that they didn't want to impose this alternative in the downtown area. So as it stands, the TOD does not include any mobile home parks. The other flip side of the TOD is that it might encourage the mobile home parks to redevelop. I mean, that's another thing to think about, and whether the number of affordable units provided would compensate for those lost. I don't know.
Okay, I think the whole idea of this, when we started it, was to be able to stretch it, pull it, and fit it wherever we wanted to, and we wanted to start with the smaller area. So, that's why it sort of stopped at 73rd.
But most of the development regulations and all that were for the northeast, northwest corner of the city, from 68th and, northwest of 68th and 522.
All four quadrants.
Yeah, the downtown...
I know they're four quadrants, but the development standards were, were they for all four quadrants?
Four quadrants.
Right.
Councilmember Sperry?
Well, thank you. I know this has been going on for many years, and it's a huge amount of work. One question, I wasn't sure, so would residential-only be eligible for the transit-oriented district overlay?
Yes, in the underlying residential zones.
Okay, so if it's already residential, then you could use this to increase the density and reduce the parking requirements for residential.
Right, and you could do some commercial in those residential zones, but it's limited just as it is limited under the current zoning to like 5,000-square-foot size of operation with maybe a 15,000-foot toll. Those are existing rules in those multifamily zones.
Okay, so it would be very low. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thanks. I have a question on the parking, and one of the things I see a lot in, well, I see it in Kirkland, I see it in Seattle, and in Redmond, in areas where there's higher density, and it is parking for scooters and motorcycles. And in your parking ratios and formulas, I don't see anything about that, and especially since we're trying to work in, with more efficient modes of transportation and everything, I was wondering if that is something that can be considered in the parking ratios and the, I'm not the expert on how you figure out how to do that, but it would be nice if there was maybe something in there that gave people an incentive to use something other than a car.
Well, I think the idea of the TOD is that you are close to transit, so that that would be one way that people may not need a car, it's because it's easy to get to transit, but your point is well-taken, that we should also maybe consider other modes of transportation as well. So we can certainly take a look at that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? Councilmember Sperry?
Just a comment. You know, I do, I do agree that we definitely need the public hearing on this. I think one of the really challenging things is, you know, we're looking at, you know, 50, up to 100 units per acre. And it's really hard to visualize, you know, what does that look like? And I don't know how you would, you know, compare that to or what. But I think that's hard, because, you know, if you just react to the number, you know, that's a lot. I don't think we, I mean, probably 50 per acre is maybe what we have over across the street now. I don't, I don't really know. So, I don't know if there's a way to show what that might look like, or, you know, perhaps there's, people tend to do smaller units. I really don't know. But
Isn't that sort of, you can if you want to, but you don't have to?
It's an overlay. So, you can choose to develop under the TOD regulations and the incentive, one of the incentives is additional density. Or you can choose to develop based on the zoning that's in place.
But I, I think your point's well made. And I think if you start looking at the properties in East King County that are being developed in downtown Redmond, where it's still wood frame, which is the heights that you're looking at here, you'd be pretty surprised at some of the density. In fact, the extreme is almost 200 units per acre for a very small unit building. So, you can get densities well in excess of 100 units per acre. But I think it would be helpful if we can, maybe work with your staff and find some photos that other cities have done to help illustrate that.
To be clear, that the height is about what we're talking about?
Correct. Yes.
Councilmember Januski?
For the properties on 73rd that are in this TOD overlay, do they have the flooding issues?
The properties on 73rd, which have critical areas on the property, usually have split zones. Usually have R1, one residential unit per acre to protect those critical areas. And then, there's usually a higher-density residential area that directly fronts on 73rd, whether it's R12 or 24. There is a requirement, though, that any, you can't build in the R1 area. You have to transfer those units into the higher-zoned areas. And that concept sort of moves forward with the TOD. So, you couldn't build in the floodplain or in the critical areas. You would have to build in the zoning area, sort of directly adjacent to the street.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we weren't incentivizing people to build, you know, a big apartment building in a flooded area. So.
That's one, you kind of have to balance those other regulations as well. You'd have to also comply with the critical area regulations, too. Yep.
Thanks.
Councilmember Herbig?
All right. I've got a bit of a list here, so I hope you'll just bear with me here, because this is a really exciting and interesting idea, but one that I'm not particularly familiar with. So, I want to, I want to start off by saying I agree with Councilmember Januski on getting rid of, or lowering the affordability rates on the pioneer development. I just don't see a, I just don't see a point for that, especially right now when we are facing a bit of an affordability crisis in the county. People are going to build, residential is hot. And I, I just see, that just seems like giving away a little too much. Quick question. So, I just want to check. People can either build under the TOD regulations or under current zoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, then, if somebody, if we were to expand the TOD south of 522, that wouldn't preclude anybody from building new standalone commercials if they wanted to?
Correct.
Correct.
So, so can you explain to me a little bit more what the worry was there?
I, I think the worry was that the, that the residential incentive would be such that it would be sort of a residential project with a little bit of commercial at the bottom to make it, to call it mixed use. And that really, maybe a two-story or a three-story office building would be a more desirable use of that area, since we have limited areas for exclusively commercial development.
Okay. Refresh my memory. We have those, we have those apartments, we have the trailer park down against, you know, by the water.
Correct.
How are those currently, how are those currently zoned?
Those are zoned for multifamily, the, the trailer park and the condos. And then, it converts, starting with plywood supply, to a regional business zone.
So, would there be any harm in extending the TOD into those, into those two multifamily, into that multifamily area a little bit to incentivize?
I, I don't know that there's a harm in it. The, the sense was that if the plywood supply area wasn't adequate for future commercial development, that that would be a potential expansion area for a commercial kind of a zoning, if a, a business campus or something like that, we're looking for a place to locate it. It really was the sense that we have limited areas for extensive commercial office development. Lake Point is already targeted for mixed use, and that it might be nice to reserve at least one area where really the focus was on commercial development.
I, I guess one of my concerns is the general kind of, where the center of the TOD is. Because on one hand, we are actively lobbying to try to get light rail to eventually come, probably to 68th and 522, to serve our downtown. And I, we're not getting a second, if we ever get light rail out here, we're not getting a second stop in Kenmore. And then, on the other hand, we're talking about putting, putting a TOD zone essentially on the other side of 522. So, I'm trying to kind of, did that come in at all during the discussion, or?
In terms of how far it was, for example, from the park and ride or the transit?
No, I'm just talking about future, you know, we're, we're working hard right now to try to get either high-capacity, you know, BRT, or eventually
Right.
Light rail at 68th.
Yes.
But then, we're talking about putting TOD down at the other end of the city, essentially.
Right. It would start at 73rd.
Right.
Yes, we did look at that. And, and we did a, a staff did a site visit all the way down to the eastern boundary of the city. There are sidewalks all the way. There are at least bus transit stops in multiple locations.
Right.
From the east end to the park and ride was a 12-minute walk. So, that information was presented to the planning commission, and they felt that that was close enough to the park and ride location
No, I
Just by that. And then, they also suggested that for the future, as we look at station planning, that maybe the TOD should be expanded, as if the focus were going to be farther to the west.
Okay. Yeah, I just feel like the location is kind of centered around our current infrastructure, not on our future possible infrastructure.
Correct. I would say that's true.
So, that concerns me just a little bit, because I don't see anybody walking from 70, maybe from 73rd. I don't see anybody walking from 80th down to catch, you know, a train at 68th. I mean, maybe somebody who's in better shape than me, or has a little time in the morning than I do, but.
Right. And, and again, I don't think that the idea wasn't that this was the end of the TOD, and it would never, ever be adjusted. But for now, the center was the park and ride.
Okay.
Which is where the transit is.
That makes more sense. Visitor parking, said one space per five units. Did I read that correctly?
That's guest parking under the current rules. Correct.
Okay. That just seems, I don't know, for me, that seems a little, so that's, that's our current zoning. That's how we
Correct.
Current, okay. Just seemed high to me. So, question about the trees. I like that there is incentive to keep trees, but why groves specifically? Why not be able to call out specific, significant trees on their own? Like, every day, I go to, now that the express works is closed, I go to Tully's. And as you're going through that drive-through, you see that huge, I don't know what it is, but it's staring, you know, gigantic tree right there. And if there was a way to preserve that, even though there's not another tree anywhere near it, it's not part of a grove, I think that might be worth exploring. What was the thought of just limiting it to multiple trees?
Yeah. Again, I think they were thinking of a very specific area, which was the Kenmore Square area, that has quite a bit of tree grove back on the north, north side of the property. Beyond that, I, I don't know that I can speak to what the incentive was. I've, I've read the materials. I wasn't there during the discussion. But if the council is interested in pursuing that question, I mean, we certainly could look at that.
I'd be interested in looking at, seeing if there's a way to tweak it so we can keep individual trees, if that's a possibility, rather than just eliminate it to groves. And also, I was wondering, why is there's a minimum distance between trees in the definition of tree groves? That seems, if they're too close, it doesn't count? Did I read that correctly?
It would be if they were too far apart.
Well, no, there, there was a minimum distance and a maximum distance, at least how I read it. Maybe I misread it, but I seem to, I don't have the exact thing in front of me right now.
Minimum distance, half the critical root zone, and maximum distance, two times the critical root zone.
Right. So, why is there a minimum distance? What if two trees just happen to be 10 feet away? Does that not then count as a?
Again, I, I'm not sure I can answer that question. I can go back and try to research the discussion that happened.
Okay. I'd, I'd just be interested in finding out why, because, on the affordability side, I think it's really great that, I, I think the, there's a lot of potential here for us to get some more affordability in Kenmore, which I think is great. I like, I'm comfortable with where the limits, you know, where the, the percentage of AMIs were for the definitions. Generally, I'm not a huge fan of the off-site allowance. I feel like on some level, that might be, that takes away from the inclusive nature that we call out, I believe in our vision statement specifically, kind of sticking other, you know, the other somewhere else. I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with that. And I was wondering, why is there a cap on the total percentage of affordable? If the people are getting, if, if the number of affordable units is dictated by the number of additional units that are allowed because they're in the TOD zone and they're building bigger than they could previously, why put a percentage cap on that? It's not taking away from new units they're being able to build. It's a percentage of the new units they're getting. So, why, why, why cap that at 10%?
What we were doing is, and that is a little bit unique here, is trying to do it to, to affordability level. And that came out of the task force looking at needs in the community, and saying it would be nice to get some units at the lower-income level.
Yeah.
The other thing we're responding to is the market. This is, we're trying to encourage the private market to get involved and do higher density. What we've heard from the development community is, the world has kind of changed in urban areas, and they're looking at long-term investment is how they make their returns. And so, when you have a long-term restriction on a unit, which is what we have here, that's, that's an impact to them. So, we were trying to, what we heard from them, is you start going above 10%, you're hurting their economics of their project. So, that's where the 10% cap came from. And that's why what we did is, some cities have had a higher percentage, but they were like at, all at 70% of median. What your task force said is, well, why don't we try to respond to the builder comment about trying to cap how many are affordable, so that we have market rate units, and then start getting some of them down to low income. Okay? And so, that's what triggered, it was a combination of those two interests, which is what created your sort of tiered approach.
Okay.
Then, what we're also recognizing is, when you start getting to the really higher densities, you start having more structured parking. It's going down further. It's getting more expensive. So, you're trying to make it, you didn't want to discourage people from trying to do true TOD density, you know, to the highest possible that works within the design guidelines. So, that was a reason for saying, at some point, it starts to get easier to do the affordability component, because the building cost gets higher, but you want, you don't want to discourage builders from doing that, because it gets to your density for TOD.
Okay.
So, it was a combination of factors, which is how we got there.
No, I, and I appreciate that explanation. That actually makes a lot of sense. Could you explain to me a little bit, though, about the off-site allowance? Because I, I'm just not quite comfortable with that.
Okay. So, this one is written, and we can tighten it down some more, is, it's your alternative compliance section. And what we've done here, other than, different than in other jurisdictions, like in Seattle, where there's like an in-lu fee you can pay, and that's at the developer's option. This is at the city's option to approve, and that's, I think it's written, is the city manager would have to approve anything that is not on-site under the standard provisions. But there's also a standard that says the affordability must be equal to or greater. There is also language in here. It says it's encouraged for it to be in the TOD area. So, maybe somebody's doing two buildings or something, and they have a way to do financing, and they could do more in one building, or something like that. So, this is set up for the city to control. The discretion is given to the city manager. That can be played with some, but it is written so that you're controlling it more than the developer community is. And so, it's just to give that flexibility, if somebody comes up with something unique, that feels like it's a win for everybody.
Okay.
And if you want to tighten that down, that's great. But that's sort of where it came from.
No, I am just concerned about somebody building essentially a, you know, let's say they're building four buildings, and they just designate one of them as the affordable building. And then, you have kids that are growing up in the affordable building.
Right.
And they have a stigma attached to them, possibly by their neighbors. You know, that's, that's something I worry about.
Okay. So, there, that you'll see that some of the standards there are not resulting in undue concentration. So, that's called out. And so, there are provisions in there to sort of offset someone doing along your lines. Now, the other thing, though, is, let's say it is one development that has four buildings. The general rules are saying, those affordable units will be generally dispersed throughout the project.
Okay.
Both in terms of unit mix, location, and, you know, on both of those counts.
It can't just be a bunch of studio
Correct. So, we saw a proposal come in, and when we get to the covenant, which is a 10-page document, that gets more clear. But if there's multiple buildings, the expectation is they don't land in one building, but they land throughout the development. And there is language in the basic provisions for that.
Okay. And then, as far as the step backs from single-family go, was there any discussion about maybe doing like a tiered step back, instead of just going from single-family height, which is 35, and then keeping that for 50 feet, and then allowing it to go to 75? Was there any talk about maybe, you know, letting it go to 40, 45, and then more natural thing? I'm just, I'm just worried about this wall.
I, I think it was trying to get the separation. How you get the separation, I think, they've kind of figured on a, a distance is the easiest way to get it.
Is it from the lot line, or is it from the single-family dwelling?
Property line.
Okay.
So, we can, that if, if you, if there's a desire to revisit
I was just curious if they talked about it at all.
They wanted to have some separation, and how they did it, I can't remember the discussion in detail, but I think they figured out that 50 feet seemed to be a reasonable amount to get the separation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smith?
I have a question on the mobile home parks. Is, one of the questions is, does the TOD district have to be contiguous? Or could, could it actually just include the mobile home parks that we have as part of it?
Well, I think you'd have to go back to sort of the rationale for why you were creating the TOD. And the reason is to sort of be close, to encourage transit use by creating higher density and having mixed use. So, the, that was the intent. The intent was not to kind of address specifically the concern about redevelopment of mobile home parks. So, whether we could, how, how we would do that, I'm not sure if it's not contiguous. Typically, if you have a district, it's easy to administer if it's contiguous, because then what you might have then is you'd have sort of an isolated parcel, which, you know, might, might be sort of harder to, to make fit.
And I can appreciate that. It was, I was thinking, where the locations are, are within reasonable distance of transit, plus they encourage a higher density and, than what's, I mean, the land's really underutilized from also an affordability of housing standpoint, if you look at just the, the DUs per acre. And so, I was just trying to think of, okay, is there a way, maybe you can, you know, overlay that over to those specific properties as well? I haven't thought about it enough, but I just wanted to know if that had been thought about or discussed.
I don't think that question specifically. It's something we could certainly take a look at and see if we have any, any ideas. Also, that your questions or concerns about redevelopment of mobile home parks, as we mentioned when we were bringing forward the comprehensive plan, taking a look at some of those affordability issues would be part of the housing strategy, which would be part of a future work program item.
Okay.
So, we don't have to resolve everything with the TOD. There will be other opportunities to address that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I, I would like to ask one back, actually. Council asked several informational questions and clarifying questions, but individual council members have asked to bring back amendments. So, before I do that, I want to make sure that the amendments that individual council members have direct, have asked, that there's sort of agreement from the council as a whole to bring back those amendments. And maybe I can just kind of go through my notes and lorry jump in anytime if I miss any. It was looking at an allowance for additional transportation, parking for additional transportation modes, like motorcycles. There was a question about not allowing the affordability level to be lowered in pioneer development. There was, to take a look at, could we look at this, the grove requirement, maybe to change that to be able to save individual trees? And I think
Concern about an off-site allowance for the affordable housing?
So, those were the, the areas that individuals brought up. And I guess I want to make sure that the council as a whole would like all those topics to be brought back with potential amendments.
Is there any disagreement?
Well, I mean, I think the first, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I mean, I think the first one on the parking was pretty easy, you know, that make the provision for bikes and motorcycles and all that. What was the next one?
It was not lowering
It was not lowering the affordability level for pioneer projects.
I, I actually would need some clarification on that. What exactly does that mean?
I think it was for the first 100 units that were developed under TOD were allowed to have a different affordability level.
Correct.
So the affordability triggered by those 100 units would be at, as written, 80% median for rental instead of 70% median. So what I think the comment was.
And that's what it is now in the, in the rules? Eighty percent, it's higher than the standard.
Correct. Just for, for the first 100 bonus units.
And council member Hervig and Danuski were sort of suggesting that that should not, that allowance shouldn't be there for the pioneer projects. It should be the straight 70%.
Oh, I, I would not agree with that. I think from what we've seen at the market, that the 80-year percent or above affordability is really a powerful incentive for developers, if that's the goal of this, is to incentivize it.
I, I wonder if I might make a suggestion.
Yes, please.
You may not like it. But again, we've heard a number of, Debbie itemized the list, and to go through each one of those, I know you have a very full agenda this evening. I wonder if it might be useful to us, for us to bring back that consolidated list with whatever information we can find about the historic rationale behind some of these original suggestions and bring those forward to you to discuss at another meeting before we schedule the public hearing.
You know, being involved in this and remembering the downtown task force and how long they took and how careful they were and how much time was devoted to this, that, yeah, I agree. I'd like to see what's, what's going on because with some of these amendments and how it would affect it. Because I know there was a lot of things that were intermingled, that were intertwined in there and sort of like you pull one thing out and the rest will fall apart. So I'd like to see it. Yes, and I know that, that council member Curtis, this is a very important thing for, for him. So yes, to, to have this come back again, I certainly don't see any reason that you shouldn't try to get some answers to some of these. Will this trigger another hearing?
Yes.
So then.
But we, when we, what we would need to do is bring forward the proposed amendments at the time of the public hearing. So if we are, this would, this approach would warrant an additional meeting before the public hearing.
Okay.
And if you're okay with that, then we'll.
Yeah, because I, I certainly want council member Curtis to be present for, and have some input on this because this is, this is something he's been waiting for, for a number of years.
Okay. So we will, we'll look at the calendar and get that scheduled for an additional meeting. And then once we get direction from the council, then schedule a public hearing.
Wonderful.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is business incubator update.
I'm going to give you a, a brief update on the incubator tonight, given the hour. And this was originally going to be a trio presentation, but due to illness and last-minute schedule conflicts, it's a solo presentation tonight. And if I could get our finance director here just for a brief moment.
We need our sleep.
I just want slideshow. Okay. There we go. Okay. All right. Yeah. All right. Okay. The last time that we provided an update about the incubator was October of 2014. And at that point, I heard from several of you on council that you, you know, companies come and go and it'd be kind of nice to know who's, who's involved with the program now. And so that's what we intend to, we, the royal we, I guess, tonight, want to focus on mostly is who are the companies who are, are working with us now? And one of the people who was going to be here tonight is the president of, of one of the companies, a good Kenmore resident and good neighbor of our deputy mayor, but we'll, we'll get him back at another time. Right now, there are five companies who are in residence at the, at the incubator. And three of those companies are, are headed by Kenmore residents. And that's something that we always wanted to see was more local leadership involved in, in, in the incubator. Also, since we last spoke with you, we are really officially launched with the virtual incubator program. That's for companies who don't need the dedicated workspace, but can benefit from the mentorship and, and consultation provided by Corey Hansen, who is our program consultant. We have three companies involved in the, in the virtual incubator program at this, at this point, all Kenmore businesses. And then maybe aware too that we just recently completed a five-session seminar program that, that Corey presented. That was very successful. We had about 22, 25 people who were involved in that. Most of them were there for each of the five sessions, which was, which was great and is quite a time commitment, too. And deputy mayor joined us for, I think, one of the very first sessions for, for part of that. As you know, we have a really good advisory group. One of the members, Kocanader, is, is here with us tonight from Bastille. And Angela Kugler, who is also a planning commissioner, but also on the, on the advisory group, is, is great because she reviews every application that, that we get, either for the virtual or the, or the in-house. We've also gotten involved in some startup events. In June, we had the opportunity to be a sponsor for a health startup weekend that was at UW-Bethel. We, we sponsored ProMed to one of our in-house incubator companies to attend that. And then we also offered a scholarship to a Bastille student to, to attend that, that event because it was about health. And so that, that worked out great. There's going to be a startup event right here in City Hall in October. And so you'll be hearing more about that as, as they get going. Quick look at, at metrics about, you know, companies coming, going, and, and what does all this mean? But, but the short answer is that we, toward the end of last year, we started adding companies and, and were up to a total, and this is total. Some of the ones, some of those 11 are no longer involved in, in the incubator. There are eight companies total, and those would mean both the in-house and, and virtual. And the, the bottom line shows how much of the base rent of the incubator space is offset by, by program fees. And, and so I will say that we started out with, with one company and they had quite a few employees. And so, so they got through a, a nice development and, and investment round, and they left right at the very end of, of 2014. And so that's why the, the numbers changed in terms of number of employees at the, at the incubator, but now we're back up. And it, and it did have, have an, an effect on how much of our base rent was, was offset. Our goal is to get somewhere between two and, and five more companies in the space. What we have now are, tend to be a little smaller companies, but, but more of them. And we want to get up to about 10 virtual companies that we're working with. And quick look at the budget, both for the biennium that just ended. We came in well under budget. And then when you take into account the program fees that, that made for a, a lower net expenditure, and we're definitely on track when we look at 2015 so far. So here are the in-house companies now. ProMed, I mentioned them, that's headed by Alex Borromeo, resident of, of Kenmore and, and his family. And so this is a, this is a business that provides what they say contingent or kind of fill-in staffing for nursing and nursing assistants, for assisted living or nursing homes or, or hospitals. And they're working on an app right now that's going to allow them to, to grow into a, you know, broader geographic base. And so they are at the incubator. They're, they're great. We love having them there. And then just to the right of that logo is the Exato Game Studios. That's one of our earlier in-house companies. It's a game developer. After a couple of years of work, their, their game, which is called Guncraft, got Xbox certification. It's quite a big accomplishment and they're working on their next project now. And so they're, they're a wonderful company. We'd like to say that one of, one of their staff people, I think, is going to get the award for the most consistent food truck customer this, this summer. And then Tanga is a, is actually a well-established company that's an online retailer based out of state. But a Kenmore resident, Joe Van Dyke, is, is the head of their software arm. And so he wanted to work other than out of home, of his home office, and he is building a, a Kenmore kind of software team for, for that company. Lifestyles Express, a really interesting model. They're, they're pulling together their, their team and, and their investors to have kind of a, a membership structure to gain access to kind of high-end recreational vehicles or equipment. So with the, the prospect of how, how much do you usually actually use that boat that you purchase? And, and all the headaches that go along with maintaining it, mooring it, storing it. This, this construct is you buy a membership and you can get access to using a boat or an, a recreational vehicle or some, or other equipment like that. So that's, that's off to a good start, too. And then Biz Diversity, also headed up by a Kenmore resident. This is an online marketing tools that help companies appeal to and, and relate to a broader cultural and diverse set of customers. So they are off to a, a good start as well. The virtual incubator companies. Here's one that you've probably heard of, the Zika Salon and Spa. They're expanding their, their spa offerings and adding, adding more staff. They're really, I think, benefiting from, from some of the marketing and, and also consultation that Corey's providing on, on, you know, just management systems, too. So they're off to a great start. Endeavor Family Counseling, Kenmore residents. They provide counseling services under contract to mainly Snohomish County Juvenile Court and, and the, the court system at large at, in Snohomish County. Have a small core of, of contract counselors moving toward employees instead of contractors, but they're, they're meeting with a lot of success in, in their work. And then our newest one, actually Bastille graduates, Starting Point Acupuncture and Wellness. They have, part of their, part of their week is here in Kenmore. The other part is in, in Bethel, I believe. And so they are off to a good start. And Zika and Starting Point were both seminar participants. But we had seen certainly Starting Point at, at earlier events. So we have pending applications right now for the virtual. And like I said, all of these are Kenmore businesses. And then there are three companies who were in-house companies for, for a period of time. They've graduated or have moved on. Connected Device, that was their, our early kind of a, kind of an anchor tenant for, for the incubator. Like I said, they had a, a very successful investment round and they are now part of a larger company that, that consolidated some of their R and D out of state. And so they, they moved on right at the end of last year. Silver Kite, I think Jennifer Kulik was, was here for an earlier briefing. That is of performance and kind of hard for me to, to describe, but, but performance that links different generations. She really desired to have some space that could also be used for workshops or performance space. She was able to find that just in, in Lake City at the George Center. So she has moved on, but is still very much a friend of the incubator. And Sync, which was the kind of up-to-the-minute inventory control, and that was an, an app-based, they moved on in July of, of last year as their business needs changed. So we've, we've been very, very fortunate to work with really talented and energetic. And, and as you, you can see, it's a nice diversity of businesses. It's not all one sector by any means. And so we look forward to continuing to market the program, look for some other grant opportunities. And we're going to be starting another seminar series this fall. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
You must done a really good job because I don't see any questions up here.
Or it's really late. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, neighborhood traffic plan. Mrs. Overlees, Brett Shock.
Councilmembers. Chris Overlees with me, and I'm Brett Shock, the city traffic engineer, here to give you an overview of our development to date on the Neighborhood Transportation Plan program. This program's modeled on This program's modeled on some neighboring cities, the work that they've done, some programs that are still going on, some that have been discontinued, and some other programs across the country differing in scope, have pulled some best practices from those models and things that apply to the situation in Kenmore. So the scope of the NTPP, as I'm calling it, is to proactively address transportation issues in our neighborhoods focused on the residential streets. We're going to be engaging the neighbors and the citizens to identify the barriers and issues. They're the ones that drive them every day, they know it best. We have funding in place, which is going to be divided in a per capita basis among the neighborhoods. At least, that's the plan right now. That's open to comment. It may not be able to fit some of the larger projects, but there are a lot of things that can be done within those budgets. And as the moderator of the program, it'll be part of my responsibility to make sure that those are, everyone's aware of those and steer people towards those that can be accomplished within the budgets. So the tools that we will have available to us, in-road physical devices, including chicanes, traffic circles, pinch points, speed bumps. These are going to require some sort of citizen data collection. We're not going to be using the same thresholds as in the traffic calming program, but we do want the citizens to use the available radar devices we have for rent to go out there and confirm that a project related to speed is the best use of money. Sometimes speeds can be deceptive, and we want people to get out there and make sure that they double-check their data.
Can I just, I'm sorry. So the radar signs that people can rent them?
I think what he meant is we have radar guns and people can borrow them.
They can check them out.
Okay, got it.
Correct. Other tools, striping and signing changes, traffic control, operational changes such as one-way streets, roadway improvements, vegetation. The vegetation trimming and the roadside improvements are things that would probably have a good impact on the other modes of travel other than motor vehicles, which is something we want to target with this program. So just an overview of the physical devices. Again, traffic islands, circles, and mounds, chicanes, humps, pillows, and raised crosswalks are basically just variations on your basic speed bump, just differing the width of them. All of these are intended to force vehicles to either turn and/or slow down as they're driving through the neighborhood streets. But they do have an impact to deliveries, construction crews, emergency services. And they can be kind of noisy for adjacent property owners, especially the ones that are related to speed bumps. And we're going to be embracing temporary. This is part of our way to bring costs down. Concrete planners, you can see the planner boxes that are just over here in the parklet. And this is a way that we can maybe create a traffic circle without having to put a lot of infrastructure in place. This also affords an opportunity for volunteers in the neighborhood to help maintain that, beautify, you know, put in the plants, and help us out to write their own little love note to their community. So the product of the NTPP will be a map for each neighborhood, identifying the projects and the priority of those projects within the budget. We'll also have a technical memorandum describing how we got there, documenting the various meetings and outreach efforts, and a little profile of the neighborhood itself, and then obviously implementation. So how do we actually get to that final product? The first step was to develop neighborhoods within Kenmore. Started to look at the arterial boundaries to divide up the city first, but that led to some situations where we had lots that were grouped with a neighborhood that they never really had to drive through. So they didn't necessarily have a reason to want to improve those streets, they would want to improve lots in another neighborhood. So we switched to a method where we're looking at access to the arterials. An example of this would be either 169th Street, south of the river, or Kenlake Place up on this side of the river, where there are a lot of residential streets that kind of tree off of that, but there's only really one way in and out of that neighborhood. So that's how the neighborhoods were divided up for the most part. And again, funding was allocated on per capita based on population from the transportation element. All right, so this is the basic map of the neighborhoods. Again, divided up by primary access route to the arterials. We do have some slightly isolated neighborhoods. Yellow South was the one I was speaking of on 169th. To balance the size of the neighborhoods, that is where the per capita distribution came into play. And I just wanted to note that private roads and arterials, although they will be inside of these neighborhoods, they're not part of the program, will accept comments on arterials and how they may affect the neighborhoods. But the funding for this program is for the residential streets only. So here is the per capita breakdown. These numbers were just based on the traffic analysis zone populations, which came from the transportation element in the comprehensive plan. Occasionally, some of the zone boundaries did not match up with the neighborhood boundaries. Lots were just used to determine populations that are in each neighborhood. And again, this is all open to comment and development pretty much through the end of the first meeting. We'll leave it open to both council and to the residents that attend the meetings to comment that, you know, hey, I feel like I'm more in with this neighborhood over here. Would you consider changing that boundary? I would like to note that downtown was not given a budget. Most of the roads that are in the white downtown Kenmore area are either private or arterial roadways, so that is why that exclusion was made. So the way to reach out to everyone in this program, we're going to have a lot of advertising for our meetings. Be doing direct mail, newsletters, both physical and electronic, website postings, reaching out to the HOAs and other community groups, Facebook groups. There will be three meetings, a mixture of at city hall and onsite meetings that'll be closer to the neighborhoods. We're also going to be accepting feedback and suggestions in online, print, and in-person, just in recognition of the fact that some people may not want to get up in front of a public forum, but they still have very valuable insight about their own neighborhood. So the first meeting will be to identify those issues and barriers. The plan right now is to hold that at city hall. And each neighborhood will need to meet a threshold of participation to continue in the program. Right now, that's set at 15 in-person households per neighborhood, but that may be altered based on the overall participation, or some of the smaller neighborhoods, that that may be an undue percentage of that neighborhood. Those that don't meet the minimum participation at the first opportunity will be afforded a second opportunity. And if at that point they still don't meet that threshold, then their funding will be allocated per capita to the other neighborhoods. So at this first meeting, which will be in the fall of this year, I'll be leading the discussion. We'll have maps and flip charts to identify various barriers and start to think about the tools that could be used to address those. The second set of meetings, which is currently set up to be outside of city hall, closer to the neighborhoods to help increase some of that participation, would be in the winter of this year. At these meetings, we will finalize the list of barriers and potential tools that could be used. The city staff will be presenting some potential screening that we'll be using internally just to start the conversation. We want to give our thoughts on prioritization and then let everyone comment on it. We'll also be looking for the residents to prioritize their barriers into, you know, high priority, middle, and low priority. After that meeting, we'll come back to city hall and collect the feedback we've gotten from the meetings, put it together with everything we've collected online and in-person, and really start to develop from an engineering perspective each of the projects that we're going to undertake using those tools, looking at the safety aspects, the sound design, making sure that we engage other stakeholders such as police, fire, King County Metro where applicable. We also want to put together some cost estimates for these projects, just to give a baseline so that the neighborhoods can understand the impact of their own budget. The screening criteria that was presented in the second meeting will be used to kind of preliminary rank the projects. Again, it's not saying that this is the ranking, it's just as a starting point for that third meeting where the citizens will get to prioritize their own projects. And we'll also be scheduling some debt acquisition at this time. We want to use these projects both as an opportunity to evaluate similar, larger projects that we might undertake, but also just to determine the effectiveness of what we're going to put in each neighborhood. So the third meeting, again, back at city hall, we will present those screened projects and let the participants know what we got in terms of stakeholder feedback, and, you know, if there were any, anything that came up in the engineering analysis as far as safety or design aspects that might need to be revised. And by the end of this meeting, the neighborhood will have their finalized list that will go into the map. And that's what we'll use to guide implementation, which is the next step, to put projects on the ground and evaluate their effectiveness, collect some future data. You know, we may have to change our approach after a short term. Again, the use of the temporary, the planters for physical devices, instead of actually getting out there and moving asphalt, would help to react to the situation better. And I'll open it to any questions.
Councilmember Smith.
Thanks, Brett. Good work.
Thank you.
And this is nice to see. The first thing that jumped out at me was the 15-person minimum threshold. That, I thought that seemed a little too high.
Okay.
And especially if they aren't there for the first meeting, because this is one of those things where after some things get going and some meetings take place, kind of word might spread easier, too. And so I would say that's one of the comments that I'd have, is that I think six or seven really well-thought-out people could be much more productive than 15. And so I would hate to have them cut off. And then, just so I understand, if there, if a neighborhood then, so let's say, let's say four or five people show up, and I guess they won't get to proceed in this plan, and I understand you have to have at some basis, but I think to have those dollars then put to another neighborhood, I guess there's no other way to do it except to do a prorata on a, I think, your per capita basis. But I just want to make sure people don't feel slighted as results happen. And so the best way to do that, I can only think of, is just to do as much as you can in the outreach upfront, so that as many people can know about this, and it can be as public as possible, because I just don't want people to feel like their neighborhood didn't get fairly represented.
You've hit on the two biggest things that we struggled with. A lot of times, you create a program, there's other agencies that have a really good one, and you kind of model it. That was not the case here. Brett truly did tons of research and was trying to take bits and pieces from other cities. But it's the, what is enough representation to say the community is represented and can give good feedback on the barriers to safety in that neighborhood was something we tossed around a lot. And then how do you, you know, distribute the resources that council set aside for this biennium? And so Brett left, we left a lot of wiggle words in the document he wrote. We'd like to have some targets for participation, but we left ourselves, you know, the discretion. You know, if you have a very large neighborhood and, you know, four folks show up and there are four neighbors in a row, is that representative of the larger neighborhood? Those are the questions we were wrestling with.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's where it probably comes into just administrative discretion, because if they bring up what appear to be very legitimate concerns, even if they are only four people on the same street right next to each other, it could be the single biggest issue, and that's why they're actually at the meeting, because they want to have it addressed and to not then have the satisfaction of being able to have follow-through on the city end. I think that could be very disappointing to those people.
We aren't doing away with our current program, which is the more reactive, I think that's what Rob was about to say, the more reactive program, because that's how we've been functioning, I think, since we became a city. Somebody comes to us and has a specific concern, and we, you know, we have a program to do that. So that's one thing that Brett and I will be looking for, is, you know, we hold these meetings, is, you know, is it representative of the larger neighborhood? Or maybe this truly is a street that might better fit that program? But I think I want to leave the door open for Brett and me to be able to go to Rob and say, hey, listen, you know, we only have a small pocket of the neighborhood that came, but we hear what they're saying, and maybe we use a piece of the money that was set aside for that neighborhood, but not the whole thing. I think we just want to be able to feel our way as we go. The last thing we want to do is turn people away that have a concern, because that's the point of the whole program.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Herbig.
Well, this is really great, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I'm excited to see how this all turns out. As I told you when we met last week, my original, how I originally envisioned this was that we would be focusing more money in a few select neighborhoods that have issues. And after talking with you, you know, the idea being that then we could get some really big things done that we could show off to people. But after our meeting last week, after kind of thinking it through, I have to say, I actually think that your approach here of spreading money around throughout the city, but most importantly, getting us a list of all of the issues in every neighborhood that we can then fund in later CIPs, I think that's huge. So I am really excited about that. I had one small question about the map. So in the green south area, where you have the golf course and then Arrowhead, more than half of that is private roads. So I worry that you might be counting a bunch of households that, for that whole area, but then the money can only be spent in the southern area?
The household boundaries that were within that private area were not included in the per capita calculation.
Okay, okay, I was just worried, you know, not worried, but I know Arrowhead has its issues, but I wanted to make sure it was fairly distributed, so. Okay, great. Wonderful job. Thanks.
Your honor, if I could add to Councilmember Herbig's comment about identifying other projects in the CIP. One thing I'd like us to do is, let's say that there's a neighborhood that has $20,000, but they need a device that costs $35,000. I don't want to tell that neighborhood that they're out of luck and they only have $20,000. I'd like us to, if the device really makes sense and we think it could be really effective, I'd like to find other ways, tap into the CIP or something to get them that money they need. So again, we're trying to build lots of flexibility into this program. If I could just add one more thing, I should have said this at the beginning of the meeting, but I think you all know that this is the result of the ad hoc committee's work last year. And so this was one of their main recommendations, and so we're implementing this recommendation. And $350,000 was identified from the Strategic Opportunities Fund to provide the funding for this project. So this is something I wanted to make sure that we get on the record, that number one, it's implementing the ad hoc committee's recommendation, and number two, it's money from the Strategic Opportunities Fund.
I love a killer choice. Being colorblind, gray is great. Councilmember Danuski.
I had my question answered. Thanks.
Any other, Councilmember Sperry.
Well, you've been busy, and it's just starting, huh? Well, it's, I always find, feel like it's better to be proactive, you know, than reactive. But you get the crowds when there's something to react to. And so I would agree that, if I understand it correctly, 15 households being representative, that does seem high to me. So might want to be flexible on the amount of citizen participation. The other thing is, I was looking at it, and I thought, well, even though there's these relatively small budgets for each section, that doesn't include all the things that are being done. So there may be things already on the list that people aren't aware of, or they're coming. So that's something I think that, you know, would also be maybe interesting to people. The third thing was, I remember meeting with a city manager, and he mentioned how the city was using the website, the nextdoor.com, and how you guys can message out to them. So I thought, well, I better sign up for them. And they said that there's no nextdoor.com for our neighborhood. And so all of a sudden, I'm looking at this boundary, and I thought, and it says, like, do you want to start this, and do you want to create the boundaries? And I thought, well, there you go. We could just make them like these boundaries, and you've got a whole communication tool here. So I haven't done it, but anyway, just a thought. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Looking to get people out to these meetings.
Yep.
So I take that as a direction to move forward as you've presented and so the meetings will be starting in the fall.
Right. It's good.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Good work.
Thanks.
I think that's a first.
What's that?
Applause.
Oh, yeah.
Single expression. Hey. An applause. You take what you can get.
I thought somebody was, I don't know what I thought. Anyway, okay.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Zach Richardson. I've been working to push the road standards across the final official, finish line here. It's a project that's been underway for several years now and hopefully we're getting to the point where we can really get this to something we can use. Have a slideshow that follows your packet pretty closely, so I'm going to try and go through it quickly in the interest of time and then we'll stop and discuss each of these policies. Today, we're not doing any formal action. We're just looking for some guidance from you guys on what it is you would like to see in these, on these particular issues. These are all issues that either staff kind of had some varied opinions on or that we think might have some impacts to developments, either cost or the land it takes. So that's where we're starting from.
And so if I can just interject one thing, so you'll be discussing a set of issues tonight and then a different set of road standards issues a week from tonight. And then we'll come back to you in, I believe, September for adoption of the whole set of road standards.
Correct.
Actually, we will present the draft whole document in September, but we probably wouldn't adopt it then. There's some behind the scenes.
We'll have to do a public hearing as well as some SEPA and Department of Commerce review, which we'll get through. So tonight, we're, I'll give a really, really brief introduction to the road standards and where they are currently. And then we have five policy discussions real quick to get through tonight and three more that I'll be bringing back to you next week. So the road standards are just a very general guidance for what roadways should look like in the city and what developments are, have to provide when they develop. They help ensure that we get things that are maintainable, they're not going to cost the city tons of money to upkeep, as well as guidance for where the utility should fall so that they, we can limit conflicts in the roadways. They're a balance of, of a lot of different things. We have to worry about vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles, as well as trying to get quality development that is aesthetically pleasing. And we're trying to meet all of your council goals as well as compliance with state and federal requirements. So there's a lot of, a lot of things to balance in these. What the road standards are not, though, is they're not a replacement for good engineering design, very specifically in them. In fact, they state that we need to have engineers apply their opinion and their, their profession to these in order to make them fully functional. And they're not going to go and fix every problem that we have currently. You know, that kind of gets back into what our previous discussion was with Brett. And they're not going to have a full list of where we need traffic calming measures. It's not going to have specifically saying we want a traffic circle at this intersection every time. It is going to provide some guidance on when we think we need to look into more traffic calming measures, but nothing very specific. And they definitely are not going to provide for all situations. And so we do have a variance process that allows us to, to deviate from it where it makes sense, given that public safety is, is still addressed. And we are not going to address the on-site parking requirements. I know it's been part of the discussion today, but that is actually in a separate section of the Kenmore Code and not in the road standards currently. So currently where the road standards are is we've prepared a preliminary draft and sent it around to all of the staff departments for review and we've gotten some feedback. And that's, that's essentially where we're at today is we've gotten mixed feedback or issues that we think could, like I said, impact development. So tonight, we're here for your guidance as well as next week. And then we will be taking that guidance back to prepare another draft, which we will present to you guys as well as to the public. That'll be a public hearing and we'll invite in the development community at that point and then send it out to Department of Commerce and SEPA review and then incorporate all of the feedback we get then into a final version, which we'll then come back to you a second time for final adoption. So there'll be two presentations on policy issues and then two actual touches of the full draft for you guys. So on each policy discussion, we've laid out kind of this format, follows the same thing as your packet. Proposed standard with the existing standard listed right below it and then what we think the potential impacts are, what our current staff recommendations are, and then what we would like feedback from you on. So the first policy is how we require frontage improvements and staff is currently proposing that we require frontage improvements on all projects which generate a traffic impact. Currently in the standards, there are, there's an exemption for two-lot short plats and there's no frontage requirements for single-family homes, individual lots that are doing any sort of development. And so we are, we are proposing to push it down to both the two-lot short plats and the single-family projects as far as even additions or tear-down rebuilds, which add two or more bedrooms. In your packet is a justification for why we think two or more bedrooms is where we can justify a traffic impact. So, yeah. And as part of this, we are also establishing a fee in lieu of program, so where there is pushback on wanting to actually construct the, the sidewalk improvements and frontage improvements, the city can collect a fee in lieu of and apply that to the sidewalk, but the sidewalk program. We are using the costs from the current sidewalk program, which range from $400 to $700 per linear foot based on the utilities and storm drainage considerations in that area. So as, as we push these frontage improvements down to smaller projects, we're going to have increased pedestrian safety just by getting sidewalks where we wouldn't currently have had them through development. It's going to reduce the demand on our city sidewalk budget by getting either fee in lieu of or additional frontage improvements built. Increased walkability is associated with potential home increase, home value increases. And obviously, as we get more sidewalk, there's going to be more need to maintain that sidewalk. Currently, our code actually assigns that maintenance responsibility to the adjacent property owner. There is going to be an impact as far as additional development costs for smaller two-lot short plats and additional development costs for individual property owners who are doing these single-family homes, as we currently have it proposed. As I mentioned, staff is proposing that we require frontage improvements on all projects that generate a traffic impact, even to the single-family homes. Staff was very clear on the two-lot short plat exemption. We think that should absolutely be removed. There was definitely more dissension among staff on the single-family requirement and pushing it down to individual property owners. We believe it may possibly be cost prohibitive to individual property owners who are potentially just developing their own property, whereas any of the plat projects are most likely turning a profit on that development. And so we feel it's pretty justified in that case.
Excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want questions as you go through these individual ones or do you want to wait for the very end?
I would say it, we'll get through each policy and then open a discussion. So if you have questions, we could do it as part of that, if that works.
I'm fine with either way.
Okay.
I just want, I don't, I want to know what you, whatever works for you is fine.
Okay.
We're going to do one policy and then ask you to talk about it.
Okay.
So we are mixing apples and oranges, so.
Perfect.
But we do feel that, that this requirement is consistent with the council goals to really improve the walkability around the city. So that, that is why staff has chosen to recommend it on all projects currently. However, we are seeking your guidance as to how you think they should be applied, either as we've proposed it or in the current form where it wouldn't be applied to the two-lot short plats or single-family homes. Or we can also do a combination where we do only new single-family homes, but not the additions or the rebuild projects. Or we can exempt all single-family projects, but still apply it to the two-lot short plats. And so with that, I would open it up to questions and discussion.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, thanks. And, and the, the one that jumped out at me was the, the two-bedroom addition. And I, I just think that's a, a significant cost burden for what could be a very small project for a homeowner. And it could be the reason that they're, they can't even afford to move because it's cheaper to add two bedrooms onto their house than it is to pay 10% for all the selling cost and moving cost. And so I, I look at that and I, I just think, yeah, you're right. I think two bedrooms probably does eventually add more traffic in some way, but it seems like a lot of, it seems like a significant burden. And, and, and one of the ways I looked at that, too, is I was thinking, we don't have a requirement that I'm aware of, that if you were to convert, say you had a finished basement that already had two bedrooms in it and you converted it to a legal ADU, that would, without a doubt, have an additional traffic impact. And yet there's no frontage requirement for that. And so I, I would just say that, that would be the one thing I wouldn't be in favor of. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Herbig.
I just want to say I'm supportive of your recommendation.
Yeah, I, I am also. I mean, I think, yeah, somehow we've got to get these little things filled in. Councilmember Danuski.
Can you explain a little more on the fee in lieu of program? Is there, can anybody do the fee in lieu of or?
No, it would be subject to city manager approval. So if it was in a location where we knew we needed the sidewalk, we probably would not allow the fee in lieu of. But on smaller residential roads where probably not going to get a sidewalk, we may accept the fee in lieu so that we can apply it to either our higher priority routes or, or another sidewalk project that would be starting. There is some time restrictions on that and so we still have to work with the accounting department to get some of the details of that figured out, but it would be subject to city manager approval.
And with the, the new homes part, would this be tear-downs, rebuilds or would it just be building a home from scratch?
The, so as it's currently proposed, it would be both, but the tear-down rebuild threshold would apply, have that two-dollar, that two-bedroom threshold as well. If, if they're tearing down and rebuilding the same home, there's probably not a change in the traffic impact. So we're using that same two-bedroom logic that we would apply to the additions as well.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we did the fee in lieu of and used the $400, somebody that had, or per linear foot, then somebody who had 100 feet of frontage, which is not that unusual, that's $40,000.
Correct.
And of course, if it was 700, it'd be $70,000. That's a lot of money. I would not be in favor of requiring that for single-family homes. I would, I would go with option number three, which required it on the two-lot short plats, but not on any single-family residential projects.
If I wasn't clear, I was for number four.
Councilmember Danuski.
I think I'm for number four as well.
Anybody else? All right.
So since we're looking for feedback on how to move forward with the document itself.
What is it going to be?
What, Mr. Mayor, where do you think?
So we've got two with four. We've got two with four. I tend to agree with.
Wait, just a sec. Your deputy mayor is raising his hand over there.
Deputy mayor.
No, I'll go with number four.
Yeah, I can do that, too. And then that'll make four for four. And then you have direction.
There you go, so.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next policy. This is the definition of a frontage of a flag lot. This is, we are proposing to define the frontage of a flag lot as the widest part of the lot along the roadway, which may not be just the limited panhandle that touches the actual roadway because of the shape of it. Currently, these flag lots don't require any additional frontage improvements other than installing either their driveway or their curb return because their panhandle that actually touches the right-of-way is only about 30 feet in most cases. So here in front of you is an example of this where under the current code, if that yellow project site was developing, the current code would only get the small little blue portion in front there as frontage improvements, essentially just the driveway and the curb return. Under the new definition, we would, we would be requiring the frontage improvements along the entire pink zone there. And part of the reason for this is that, especially in this case, you see that front lot is probably not able to develop any further. And so in, in these cases where these flag lots develop and then leave a undeveloped lot up front, we have no further ability to, to require a sidewalk along there other than expanding city budget. So it, we kind of feel this is a small loophole that, that projects have fallen into because that panhandle lot can add a fairly significant number of lots. And in fact, this one is currently under construction now. And you can see that at the opening there, just providing their curb returns. And under the new code, we'd be able to require that, that frontage all the way through that red zone there. So again, this is going to increase pedestrian safety by getting more walkways where we wouldn't have had them before. Additionally, this, this addresses accessibility because we're getting longer segments of sidewalks, so we're having fewer ramps and fewer on-offs for disabled users. And again, increased walkability with potential home value increases and more sidewalk that needs to be maintained. And there's definitely going to be an increased development cost on those flag lots. Also, with the addition of additional sidewalks, we do have additional impervious surfaces that then require stormwater mitigation. We are proposing to allow pervious sidewalks in the new standard, so we may be able to offset that somewhat. But there is going to be that additional impervious surface to worry about. And so we are, like I said, proposing that we extend that frontage definition to include the full width rather than just the panhandle lot. I mentioned that we feel it kind of fell into a loophole because it can have significant impacts and then we end up in a situation where we have no potential to get further sidewalks. And we do feel that this cost is pretty reasonable for the amount of development that can potentially happen on these flag lots. And so this one's a little more simple in the council guidance. We can proceed as we proposed with the full width definition or we can proceed as we've currently been doing it with the smaller panhandle definition.
Zach, could you go back to the map, please? I would like to add one thing. To me, I could see this being a use of the fee in lieu program because you have varying right-of-way width. Sometimes we may not have the real estate to build a sidewalk. So this may be a circumstance where if that single-family residence doesn't have the right-of-way to put the sidewalk in, we could take the fee in lieu money and apply it nearby.
And so with that, I would open it up to questions and discussion, please.
Questions? Deputy mayor.
What if you have a flag lot that is a single residence on that lot? The access is the panhandle to the street, but another border of the property is on another road or street, but no access to the property through that, from that side?
If, if it borders an adjacent public roadway on the backside, is that what you're asking? Typically, we would try to encourage that they take the access off that larger width so that we don't have this situation, but.
But if you've got a steep slope there?
So the, the question is, what can we do in that situation?
No, what do you have to, say, say I had a piece of property, there's a flag lot, 25 feet in the flag, in the panhandle, but on the backside, there's probably 100 feet adjacent to another road. Okay? That's not the access point. The access is down the panhandle of the flag. Steep slope down to that other road. If I wanted to put on a big addition or rebuild the house, would I have to put a sidewalk on the side of the property that isn't, that is not the access to the property?
Originally, we were actually proposing that, that frontage would be required on all sides, but it's been pointed out that we can, we can require frontage on corner lots where there's an impact like that. But if the access is all coming off one side, we cannot actually require the frontage improvements on the backside.
It continues to be important that we have to show a nexus to traffic impact. We can't require these things just because that we have to be able to have a nexus. And so sometimes it's, you know, a cul-de-sac and the access is off one side and you have to go way far around and it's nowhere, you know? As you would drive, that backside isn't really impacted by the home that was built. So it really comes down to, you know, situations and that impact.
All right. Any further questions?
really impacted by the home that was built. So it really comes down to, you know, situations and that impact.
All right. Any further questions?
So is everybody okay with what has been proposed? Or do you not want to proceed? You're okay with what's proposed? You're okay with what's proposed?
Thank you. Moving on to the third policy, um, I believe, so currently, um, some of the smaller residential roads only require sidewalk on one side. We are currently proposing that we require sidewalks on any side of a street, which will have a driveway or lot accessing, uh, that side of the street. So in, uh, any case where a cul-de-sac is built internal and has homes on either side, you're going to end up with sidewalk on both sides. There would be limited situations where if it's developed adjacent to an external property line or another property, um, you would only end up with the sidewalk temporarily on one side, but when the other side developed, you would then get the sidewalk on that side as well. Um, so here's a, a road that was built under the current standards and it's a little hard to see, but there's sidewalk only around the north side there. And so with the new standard, we'd be able to get that north side and the south side in that situation where the cul-de-sac is in the middle. This is another situation, um, that gets more into the second option that I was talking about. Currently, the project on the north side of that road built the new sidewalk along that roadway, on the north side of that roadway. And the property to the south there, well, multiple properties to the south there have potential for redevelopment. And under the current standard, they wouldn't have to build another sidewalk. They would be able to just build the curb and, and build their two frontages on the east and west side there. Um, under the new standard, as we're proposing it, they would be required to provide a sidewalk along the south side of that public roadway as well. Uh, but they wouldn't provide it until that second lot developed. And so this is that same situation, just another way of providing the visual, this is what it would look like temporarily. And then when the second one develops, you'd have your sidewalk on both sides. Um, this is the, these are the only two exceptions to that. And these are the, on the lower left there, you have this small private track, access tracks for small. Um, I believe in your packet, it says six lots are max. We're actually trying to lower that to four lots max. So that would be that exact situation in the photo on the left there where no sidewalk is actually currently required on small roadways like that. Uh, and then the other exception to that requirement would be something like the town home development shown in the upper right there. Again, hard to see, but the access road is on the north side of the buildings, but the sidewalk is on the south side because the front doors are actually on the south side of that building. So it makes sense to separate the sidewalk from the roadway. As we get, these, like you'll see, a lot of these are the same repeated. We're really trying to increase our pedestrian safety by getting more sidewalks where we wouldn't have had them before, increasing accessibility by hopefully eliminating some of those dead end cul-de-sacs where the sidewalk just stops. Uh, again, increased walkability is increased home value and additional sidewalk maintenance needs as well as development. So we're going to increase development costs for some of these smaller plats that would have otherwise been able to only provide sidewalk on one side. And then, uh, this also is going to require more land for development because you have to leave additional room for that extra sidewalk that we're now going to require on the other side. And again, we get into the additional impervious surfaces by requiring more sidewalks. So we do have more stormwater impacts as well, but we can hopefully balance that with the addition of previous sidewalks in these standards, so. So we are really pushing forward to, to get the sidewalks on both sides or any side that's going to have driveways. And, uh, we, we really feel this is consistent with the goals that, that you guys have laid out and, and the Target Zero initiative. And typically, the, the impacts are going to be limited to, to developers who, um, are really making some money on the project. We're not, we're not pushing this part to the, the smaller homeowners. And again, we feel this is very reasonable cost and for the amount of development where that can occur. And so, uh, again, a much more simple proposal of either we can proceed as we've proposed and require the sidewalk on two sides of all roadways, or we can proceed with no change from the current, in which case some of these smaller residential roads could have sidewalk on just one side.
So then the cul-de-sacs. Require sidewalks on both sides?
Correct.
More than four?
Yeah, more than four.
Yeah, no. Yes. Everybody, any questions in favor of proceeding as recommended? Big thumbs up.
All right. Thank you. And so the next one kind of goes hand in hand with the sidewalk. And we are proposing to require amenity zones with any road that has a sidewalk requirement. Uh, amenity zones are typically, typically landscaped, uh, strips that separate the sidewalk from the roadway. In our downtown area, they will actually be the four, front four feet of the eight-foot sidewalk. Uh, it's where you see currently in the downtown area, the, the tree grates and, uh, it's also where we can align all the, um, fire hydrants, the street light poles, the pedestrian light poles, that sort of thing. So in the downtown, there will actually be, uh, sidewalk in that front four feet, but in all the other zones, they would be landscaped areas. And currently, we don't have any requirement for amenity zones to be required, um, unless they're given as an option to reduce the arterial sidewalk width. Since we have a six and a half instead of five feet requirement on arterials and, and you can go back to the five feet if you provide an amenity zone. So this, this graphic shows a lot of the advantages of amenity zone. The main one to me is the level sidewalk shown in red on your screen. We were, we'll be able to have the driveways in the front four feet, um, in that amenity zone area so that the sidewalks can actually stay level as they go across the driveway. So we don't have a constant up and down motion at every driveway, which is really an impediment to disabled users and just everyone's comfortability. And also these amenity zones give us the, the buffer so that we have a safer sidewalk because they're separated back and they provide an actual physical buffer from the vehicles. And it also gives us a place for all the utilities, like I mentioned, fire hydrants, street, street lights, as well as, um, street signs, which we can now move up. Currently, we have to place them behind the sidewalk when the sidewalk's built next to the curb. So now the sidewalks can be, or the street signs can be in this amenity zone and then they're much more visible to drivers there. Um, and then additionally, if, if, um, they choose, we can churn these, we can turn these areas into stormwater treatments, which is really consistent with the upcoming LID changes. And, and these can act as small rain gardens essentially. May have to go over the four foot minimum width we're recommending currently in order to get good amounts of stormwater treatment, but that would be kind of an option for the developer as a trade-off for getting their stormwater treatment in there. And so here's just a quick photo of it. On the far side of that road, you'll see a much more traditional amenity zone. It's just grass with street trees, um, and some poles. And on the near side, that's actually one of the stormwater treatment areas. So that's more what those look like and they have a little bit more of a divot. Again, we feel this is increasing pedestrian safety by creating that buffer from the sidewalk and as well as it's really increasing the accessibility by creating that level side, that level walkway that doesn't have to dip at every driveway. And again, increasing that street sign visibility by putting, pulling them closer to the curb. In these amenity zones, they don't actually increase walkability, but the visual curb appeal of them is pretty well documented to increase home values as well. Um, and then obviously, we do have additional landscaping needs that are going to pop up with this. Again, currently, the landscaping, like the sidewalk, is assigned to the adjacent property owner. And this will have a small additional development cost, but again, this is cheaper landscaped area. We're not talking about heavy amounts of pavement or anything, so we, we feel it's pretty minor. And then it is going to add to the amount of land that we need for these roadways because we're going to have an additional four feet on each side of the roadway that needs to be accounted for. So, um, it'll impact development in that way.
Good. Zach, can I add something?
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of a question. This amenity zone also bans the rolled curb, correct? Does amenity zone concept makes it so that rolled curbs are unnecessary?
Correct. Uh, if that was a direction that we, we wanted to go was to eliminate the rolled curbs, but then if we want to eliminate the rolled curbs, if you keep your sidewalks right at the back of curb, you're going to end up with that constant up and down for every driveway that crosses it. So in, in conjunction with that, eliminating the rolled curbs, this, this helps improve that, that accessibility and eliminates that need to dip at every driveway.
So, um, we do allow rolled curbs right now. Um, and I, they're kind of a pet peeve of mine. There's a lot of downsides to rolled curbs. It allows cars easier to, to hop the curb and ride up on the sidewalk or whatever. Um, they're also pretty uncomfortable if you're going up and down one every day, um, in, in your car and folks with health issues, back issues, things like that. It's not as comfortable to be going up your driveway in a rolled curb. And so these proposed road standards are going to ban the rolled curb, correct?
Correct. And, and as you've mentioned, I have seen in, in my experience numerous times that with the rolled curbs and without an amenity zone, that the vehicles will pull right up and, and obstruct the sidewalk so that they're actually no longer ADA compliant because the vehicle's blocking it.
Yeah, and they're not as street sweeper friendly either. So, so there's a lot of downsides to rolled curves.
And I would like to add that this doesn't mean that on occasion, we won't have what I call depressed driveway. Our goal is to keep pedestrians at a flat level and have them own that real estate. And so when you're in a vehicle, you know you're crossing a pedestrian walkway. Um, so it could be because of topography, like if a home is really far below the roadway, you, it just won't work to have them go up over a sidewalk and then drop off at the back of the sidewalk. But by making this the norm, if we do something different, it'll be a deviation that will have to probably be approved by me. Um, and it, we will look at, you know, what is the need? So we aren't eliminating in all circumstances, having a pedestrian walkway dip at a driveway, but we will significantly reduce how often that happens.
So I don't have a curb in front of my house. And my house is level with the street and because of the topography, we had to have an asphalt strip put in front of the property because all the water was coming down and right down in, in, into the driveway, into the yard, into everywhere. And where's the maintenance coming from? The maintenance funds coming from to maintain these amenity areas? I mean, we see them all over town and I think we've been complaining about our own areas along 522 where we've got street plantings. They're just filled with weeds. And I know we've all been complaining about Gilbert-Gilman drain allowance on the south side. Boy, that's all filled with weeds. And now we're suggesting to put more throughout the city? Where's the maintenance for these going to come from?
Uh, well, specifically on planter strips, uh, the current Kenmore code, separate of the road standards, is actually designating that maintenance responsibility to the adjacent property owner. So it is actually the, the home right in front of it that should be maintaining those planter strips in, in this situation. I think 522 is obviously kind of a, a different animal there, but, um, so in, in the current proposal, when we build these in front of homes, it would be that homeowner who's adjacent to it, who should be maintaining it.
And how, I mean, we seem to be, keep the jail crew very, very busy. And it's like, people don't do that. The jail crew does it. So how much, I mean, it seems to me that unless we stiffen some of the penalties, the public nuisance penalty, penalties and that, to go along with it, to force the maintenance, how are we going to get the maintenance done on this?
I believe you're talking about an issue which is outside the road standards, so.
Fine. Councilmember Herbig?
Growing up in Wallingford, everybody had these in front of their house and people kept them up because they didn't want their house to look, you know, bad. So.
Those are the old days.
No, that's still how it is. I still go to my parents' place and they still, everybody's keeping up their, uh, their frontage.
Simon's Road.
Well, okay. Um, when I was out knocking on doors a couple of years ago, there was, I was always happy when I came across a place that had sidewalks, but some of them, I couldn't figure out what was wrong with them. And then when I read this, I realized it was a lack of amenity zone that really made it not quite feel right. So I'm very excited about this because this will really, I think, class things up a little bit, um, make it a lot more friendly for ADA users. Um, and, uh, just one more thing. What was it? Lost my train of thought. Anyway, I'm fully supportive of this, very excited to see it. Um, and I wish that it had been done, I wish that it had been, this had been in Kent County's code before we incorporated, because we've had a lot of development since then with a lot of just sidewalks on the street and it just doesn't feel right.
Deputy Mayor?
The last bullet there, additional land required for development.
Mm-hmm.
The sidewalk and the amenity zone, don't they have to be on civic right of way?
Correct. They would be in the public right of way, but as, as the, the property develops or, or builds a, a new roadway, that would be dedicated to the city. So it's, it is going to come out of that development potential for that piece of property.
Okay.
It, it means more private property being dedicated over to public roadway?
Correct.
Okay. So you're taking private property?
It's, it would be dedicated to the city, yes.
Okay. And then, and an existing lot, if you want to rebuild your house, tear it down, start over. You'd put in a sidewalk and you'd put in the amenity zone and you'd have to give the city property to be able to do that?
Uh, based on the input to policy number one, actually, no. Because we would not be requiring frontage improvements on that tear down and rebuild.
Okay.
So this, this would be, um, only plat projects or new homes, according to the policy.
Has this been tested in other jurisdictions? Because it seems like a violation of 14th Amendment.
It's.
Taking of private property, you're forcing it with this legislation?
It's, it's not, um, we're getting into a legal realm, it's a little outside, but it's, it's really no different than currently, the way we currently do it, because we do require sidewalk on one side and we require that the road get dedicated to the city. We're just increasing the width that, that's going to require. So it's, it's, they currently are dedicating land to the city when they build new public roads. This is just changing the width that, that we're requiring.
Building a public road, okay.
Yes.
You've got a road that's already there and you've got public right of way on each side of that road. It's already plotted for a certain width. And if that width is not satisfactory for two lanes, curbs, amenity and two sidewalks, then you'd take it from the property owners?
Correct. If, if we're talking about frontage improvement, we're only talking about the half that's on that side of the, the existing roadway. And so, um, sorry, when I said dedicating new roadways, that, that's more for the, the cul-de-sacs or, or brand new roadways that are built from scratch. But in the case where it's an existing roadway, it would only be on that half of the roadway that is the frontage.
Okay.
It wouldn't be on both sides in that case.
And would be triggered by the minimum number of new construction units being built, as you discussed earlier.
Correct, yeah. The, by the traffic impact.
So then, do we have it in our code today to require the property owner to maintain that public right of way in front of his house? Is that in the code today?
Yes.
It's standard.
Just don't look at my house.
I know, but I, it, it's not being done and that's why.
Yeah, we could come back and have a policy discussion on that. Um, where it gets difficult is where you have arterial roads like Simons where their back fence fronts onto Simons and the property owner's less inclined to maintain that because it's not the front of their property and doesn't feel like their property.
In some of these areas, I think where we've got some, some drainage stitches, right? Driveways that going across them, so you've got this, like a swale in some of the older neighborhoods with no sidewalks that, and a lot of those are not maintained.
Hmm.
Because it's not their property.
There's also a liability issue on the sidewalk itself. If there's a crack, a tree lifts it, property owner's liable for that. It's not a city sidewalk, it's their sidewalk.
Who's gentleman you need to talk to about that? Um, all right. So where are we at? We've, for, so, Councilmember Sperry?
Uh, thank you. I do have some questions on this. Um, so was the thinking behind this only requiring this in, uh, so in your proposal of requiring amenity zones, was it only for like new developments, like entirely new developments? Or was the thinking that it would fill in gaps where there's existing sidewalks already?
Uh, well, it would, it would be on any development that has a traffic impact. So it's, based on the policy one, that would include any new development and a single family home that's brand new building. So it would fill in short gaps, um, as that development happens.
No, no, that's why. Because one of the things when I, I did my quick research driving around after I knew this was going to be here, I, um, what I saw was that, first of all, if you, if you try to fill in gaps and all of a sudden they're four feet. to fill in gaps, and all of a sudden they're four feet back further, then you end up with all the zigzaggy things. You're not really ending up with a nice, smooth sidewalk. The other thing is, I noticed that, to me, it makes sense on more of the major roads, like the arterials and that kind of thing. Because you really do get that nice setback from the traffic. And it, you know, gives you some separation with the trees and all that. But when I went and looked at the cul-de-sacs, or the more, I went off of 80th, so that's a fairly recent development. And again, you know, I know that we've heard some comments not in favor of those rolled curves. I didn't even know what they're called. But they do eliminate that issue of the up and down, up and down. And those are very small lots. And one of the things that I thought of was, you know, if you do a new development, then that's a whole nother four feet on each side. So if we do, I don't, is the standard sidewalk like four feet?
Five feet.
Five feet. So we've got, you know, basically, we've said, okay, you can't just do sidewalk on one side of the street, which is five feet. So we've added another five feet, which I think, just again, from driving around, it looked kind of half-done. You know, there's all these sidewalks you had to kind of keep going over there. So I'm totally in favor of having it on both sides. So if we add another four feet, then we've really added another eight feet plus five feet, thirteen feet. And if we have minimum lot sizes, so we're, so really, it's a lot to do. Anyway, so I do have some concerns. I mean, I, you know, I think they do look pretty, you know, established neighborhoods and all that. But I question how you would make that change if you're, if that's not the standard already.
Yeah, there are gonna be transition points where, as these fill in, that's true in most cases with our development, too, as things have changed. That's just kind of the standard. I still, my opinion is that the angles are still more user-friendly than the up-downs of the driveway, or the temporary ramps that you'll see at the end. So I still believe that's an increase in accessibility. But it is definitely a concern.
Councilmember Herbig?
I think at the end of the day, we need to consider whether we want new development to be really quality, or if we're willing to keep allowing kind of half-measures when we're putting, when we're allowing new developments through the city. And I realize we won't see a lot of these changes for decades, really. We won't see the fruits of these changes for decades. But I think when we look back, the amenity zones, I think, will be something that we'll appreciate in the long run. It may not be something people point to, but it's something that you notice subconsciously as you're walking around. So.
I mean, I guess I would feel more comfortable if I knew we had a solid, foolproof way of maintaining them. No.
So I've had pretty mixed opinions on this one. I guess is there a way to call for a kind of a consensus on this?
Yeah, I'll get you that.
Yeah.
So where are we at? On proceed as proposed?
So, ask a good question first.
Yeah, please.
And I've been thinking, because I don't really even know how to ask this. But when, we have a lot of substandard width roads, or not a lot, but we have enough of them in our city that, so if you had one that was primarily developed along it, that had, you know, homes that have lots of economic value to the property, so you know they're not gonna be torn down in the next few decades, most likely. And then all of a sudden, somebody has one piece that's got a fair amount of frontage that's gonna be developed. So does that, with this sidewalk and all that, would it all be with what the road standard width should be, and then it's taken from there, regardless of where the natural line of the street would be?
So, yeah. We'll be coming back next week with a road width question for you. So that will control where we set the curb. And so, yes, all of this impact will be from that back of curb, back to the property line. So the curbs are set on a different threshold, essentially. And then this will all be behind that. Did that answer the question?
Yes, about as good as you could relative to the way I asked it.
Okay.
So I was hearing no curb. So now we're back to curb?
What we were discussing was no rolled curb. So we do still need a vertical curb to protect it.
Okay.
Yes.
And I think of sidewalk and amenity zone as frontage improvements. And so if there's a circumstance where we would allow a fee and lieu for frontage improvement, that's all of these things. So that would be curb, gutter, sidewalk, and the amenity zone.
So there was just a remodel in, over in my neighborhood, and a new house added. So there's a substantial remodel to the existing house. The lot was split, and another house was put in. Now, right now, there is no sidewalk requirement. But if these get approved, then there would be a sidewalk requirement. That was a corner lot. So that means there would be then sidewalk on both sides around the corner. Now, if we went along with this one, we would then have an amenity zone in that sidewalk. Now, there's no sidewalks at all in that part of the neighborhood. So all of a sudden, within that property, we would have to widen the road, because the road's too narrow, or it's very narrow. And we would have to widen the road, and then we would have to take and put an amenity strip in, and then the sidewalk. Is that correct, the way this would go?
Correct. And I'm familiar with the project you're discussing. And that was exactly that two-lot, short plat exemption that we sought to remove in policy one. I believe, I would want to double-check on this, but I believe we still required the full right-of-way dedication. So we actually do have the property, regardless of the fact that they did not have to build the sidewalk.
So we've got one street coming in, that all of a sudden, the road's gonna get wide just before you get to the corner, right? And then after you take the corner, the road's gonna get narrow again.
Yeah.
Unless other people start tearing down their houses around there.
Correct. And we would have to design, that's one of the engineering things that the standards tell you how to do the transition. But it truly needs to be designed on a case-by-case basis, so that we make sure we do that transition correctly and get cars back to where they need to be and avoid any potential in-ditch issues.
And this is where we set upfront, that we can't design these guidelines for everything. And that's where our engineering team's judgment comes in. If it's a fully-built-out, single-family neighborhood, and the likelihood of things changing significantly, you know, that might be a perfect case for a fee-and-lose situation, instead of requiring a little piece of sidewalk where we're pretty confident, long-term, that the character of that neighborhood is not gonna change, and we'd never get any other sidewalk.
Anything? Anything else? Councilmember Sperry?
Yeah, this one, I feel like it needs more work. I just, you know, I can see it. Like I said earlier, we're in the, on the arterials, on the main downtown streets. But I'm just not sure in really local residential neighborhoods that it adds enough to make it worthwhile, the amount of land it takes. So.
I have a question on that.
Certainly.
Do we have, I know I've seen maps in the past that have literally every road we have, and it rates it as far as like arterial, or feeder street, or whatever. Is there something that, is there a map like that, that we can look at to see, sort of put that into context? And maybe that there is a way to have the, this amenity zone in a significant portion of the development, but maybe not on some of the really kind of like rural roads that we have?
It would be possible. With the road standards, consistent with the transportation element update that we had just recently, we will actually have, each arterial and collector is gonna have its own unique road section. So it'll be very specific as to what will be built on those. And that, those were designed, we had Priti help us with those, they were designed with the transportation element in mind, but also keeping in mind the existing right-of-way widths we have on those, because those are pretty confined roadways in most cases. So those would be very specific for those major roadways. And that is certainly possible, to separate out those roadways from the smaller residential roadways.
So I'm kind of with Councilmember Sperry, that this one maybe needs a little bit more work. I'm not sure. Where's everybody else at?
Kind of on the fence.
Pardon?
I'm kind of on the fence.
Kind of on the fence.
I can go with their recommendations. I see two with the recommendation, and I see others on the fence here. Okay.
Maybe I might suggest that we're going to have another policy conversation next week, where we actually talk about the whole road widths, and how we want, we're, you know, struggling with how to break up all these policies. So maybe this is a good one to punt on.
Yeah.
And maybe we can add it to the end of next week, if more context is provided. But one thing Zach said is just a reminder that when we updated the transportation element last year, we looked at all of our arterial roads, and we documented how we wanted them to function, how many lanes, what type of bike lanes. So what we're really talking about here is non-arterial.
Right.
These are residential.
It's more in the neighborhoods.
Yes, these are non-arterial. So not 61st, 68th, 73rd, 80th, Juan Eden, Simons. It's the other ones.
So I can prepare for that next meeting, perhaps an exhibit that'll show how much the right-of-way widths would be changing as an impact of all these changes that we're discussing. So what we currently get right-of-way width-wise versus what we would be requiring with the addition of the amenity zones and the additional sidewalk. So maybe that would be helpful in helping make some more decisions.
That would be.
Okay.
Councilmember Herbig?
I mean, yeah, when we're talking about road width, and we're talking about how much parking we want to allow for, we could theoretically tighten up the right-of-way by allowing for parking on one side or the other. So there are different options for still getting all of this while keeping the right-of-way constrained.
So by the end of next week's meeting, we'll have had a full conversation about the width of a roadway. From the back of sidewalk, you know, kind of in, you've got your sidewalk, maybe or maybe not an amenity zone, maybe or maybe not parking, and then you have your lanes. And you also have on arterials, bicycle facilities. So it's really looking at how wide are your roads, and what do you want to fit in them? And we're kind of talking to you about half of it tonight. And what I'll talk about, I think, the big conversation for next week is going to be parking on residential streets, and to what extent we provide that.
Yeah, that could be interesting, because there's no way there'd be parking on either side of the street in some neighborhoods in this community. So, all right.
So revisit policy number four.
Number five.
All right, the final one. And this has to do with where we want to require existing utility lines to be undergrounded. Currently, I chose the figure in KMC 1852 for, that shows kind of where downtown standards should be applied. I've been informed, this is not the most complete downtown map, but it's a good starting point for this discussion. And we're really looking at, where do you think it's necessary to require existing overhead lines to be undergrounded? We do have code that currently requires new utility extensions to be undergrounded. And that applies to both the small utility extensions to individual homes. They have to be undergrounded now. There's no more overhead connections. It also applies to new cul-de-sacs and things like those. Those have to be undergrounded. So we're not getting new poles. This discussion is specific to how to apply to existing frontages where the pole's already in place, and could remain even after the frontage improvements are installed.
Would that take the pole out of the sidewalk that we just put in there on 68th?
Are they going to?
I mean, would that, would that?
Yes. If, as proposed, that would be a new requirement, is that they wouldn't have left that overhead line in place. They would've had to underground it through their frontage, yes. So this is, this is the figure that we've used from the current code. And we are also proposing that we go ahead and add the extension all the way down 68th to the river. Those two pieces were currently just not in this map. And so that is currently, the way we wrote the standards, it would apply to all of these colored locations in this map, as well as those two little blue lines. This has huge potential impacts. This little graphic in front of you, the little table, comes directly from a PSE website. And you can see that we're not gonna have anyone building per mile. So these costs are slightly inflated over anything we'd see. But you can see that in this, we've got an eight to 10 times cost for undergrounding versus overhead installation. But that's, there's a significant cost associated with that. But it does improve aesthetics, especially in the downtown areas. And then it also does increase service reliability. These lines with the, the undergrounded lines are not subject to the weather, the storms, the tree branches falling, that sort of thing. But there is also, with undergrounding, we have additional construction complications. We've got to shove an awful lot of stuff into the sidewalk area. We've got to get vaults and handholds and access points. So there's a lot more potential for conflict in the actual construction of it. So we are currently proposing that we require undergrounding in all of the downtown areas identified in the map. We feel that, at least in the downtown areas, that the aesthetics are important enough to drive that additional potential cost. We were not requiring it in all the residential areas necessarily, because the aesthetics don't, didn't seem to staff to necessarily justify that significant of an increase, or the potential increased complications on those roadways. So we are seeking your guidance as to how exactly you want to apply these underground standards. If you'd like to apply it to all of the downtown areas, limited areas of the downtown, or if you did want to potentially extend it to all areas of the city. And so with that, I would open up discussion and questions.
Councilmember Sperry?
Could you go back to the map that showed what, so you're looking at everything that's got color on it?
Correct, currently.
Is, now, a lot of this, we've already done. I guess it's just that second block here. Because of every place that the highway is, I mean, we've spent lots and lots of money doing this.
Correct. The city has paid to underground a majority of that 522 corridor. We do also have, I believe, in the development agreement for Spencer Square and Spencer 68, they are undergrounding their portions. So those have been completed.
So when would this requirement be triggered in this area?
It would be anytime there was a new development in this area. Or once we trigger the frontage improvements, this would be part of those frontage improvements.
Wow.
And so there may be a significant reason to reduce it from this map. And we can create a new one through these road standards. But we're just using this as our starting point to kind of open this discussion.
We really struggled with this one, because I do want to stress how expensive and complicated undergrounding can be. When we do a corridor, for example, we chose 181st Street, we're putting sidewalk on both sides of the street. So if there's a power line that crosses a street, it's much easier for us to trench across the road, because we're out there with a contractor, doing roadwork anyways. But you could have a private property that has a pole on their frontage that they have to underground, but that pole serves somebody across the street. So you're now trenching across the road and setting a new terminal pole. A terminal pole is where it comes up out of the ground. You see the conduit sweep up the pole. So you could theoretically be adding new poles across the street where they didn't exist, to underground a certain frontage. Now, long-term, it will all end up underground, but it is not easy, and it's costly. So we propose this as a starting point for conversation, and really want your guidance on, and if we don't exactly decide the limits tonight, I think that's okay. But we do need to figure out what the limits are for undergrounding, if that's something we want to do.
I know with all of the power outages that we get, and it is, you're right, it's very expensive. And I don't know how to go about doing it. But it's certainly something, over time, I would love to see undergrounded. And I know that some of the new developments going in, that they're undergrounded. And maybe that's the way to go. But I certainly like the look of the downtown that we're starting to get now with it being undergrounded.
I was kind of picturing the undergrounding being kind of like the walkable downtown area. You know, on the map, you know, people up the hill over there, there's small little properties. I'm not sure how they're gonna do a sidewalk, an amenity zone, and underground their utilities. I don't know if they'll ever redevelop. It's a lot.
Can I ask what your vision of walkable downtown would be then?
Good question. Yeah, I don't know.
Currently, we do have the requirement for the additional banner brackets, the irrigation for the flower baskets, the electrical receptacles for the Christmas tree lights, or holiday lights around, on the street trees, not on the Christmas tree. And so those apply to 68th between 182nd and 522, and 180- And so those apply to 68th between 182nd and 522 and 181st between, I believe, 65th and 73rd. And so that may be another potential corridor of consideration instead of the entire downtown area.
Anything else? So where are we at on this one? What kind of direction? A little more information when we do roads?
I'm leaning towards the staff recommendation.
So I'm.
I don't think the roads kind of conversation is really going to help you with this one, because this doesn't add more real estate that you need, you're undergrounding in the roadway and under sidewalk. It doesn't widen the right-of-way needed. It really comes down to complication and cost, in my opinion.
So, staff recommendations, we want to, everybody happy?
Well, one of the things that, so this map that we're being shown is just a starting point and so, so downtown, was that including everything on this map at this point?
Correct.
I, I, I think that's too much. I mean, if nothing else, going down to the tan, I'm, personally, I'm still struggling with this, I just know how much money we had to spend to do this and it is so much money. And I just would hate for people not to be able to upgrade properties and, you know, add a barrier to the kind of transformation that we're seeing, so.
And so the, the colors shown on that map currently don't really impact the frontage improvements, but they do impact some of the other design standards for downtown. And so you can tell that there's, there's a clear distinction between those colors as far as what the importance of those standards were. So, yes, picking any one, two, or all three of those standards would certainly be a feasible possibility as well.
So the number ones have the highest requirements now?
That's my understanding.
The tan? Okay.
Councilmember Herbig.
Just looking at the map, I mean, 522 is already undergrounded, I think the addition to One Eden makes a lot of sense. 181st, I think that, that is going to be our downtown street and I think it shouldn't be undergrounded. There is one little cul-de-sac on here that I think we could probably take off the map fairly non-controversially, and that would be right on 182nd, just this side, just east of 65th, 66th, depending on which side you're on, kind of on the back of the property there.
I see it.
It's a really kind of invisible cul-de-sac there to the rest of the city. I think the idea is to make our downtown visibly, you know, more welcoming and that's, that particular section doesn't really contribute. 68th is one of our main arterials and I think we need to do everything we can to, to make it as nice as possible. You might have a conversation about 182nd, possibly taking that off, but personally, I think keeping 181st on there is pretty essential.
So, am I, my hearing consensus is sort of going along with staff's recommendation on this one? I'm not seeing any, no head shaking.
So, sorry, to follow up on that, so I'm, I'm hearing pretty clearly 181st and I think 68th, that my kind of final question would be, and like you said, we've already covered the 522 corridor, so I, I believe that covers a majority of it. Do, the final two questions would be, do we care about some of those smaller connectors between 181st and 522, such as 65th, 63rd, those, those north-south connectors? And then also do we want to extend it up and down 73rd on that far side? Those are kind of the pieces I'm missing.
So as they develop is what you're talking about, right?
Correct, correct.
And so let me see if I've got this right now. 181st would be done, I mean, it, it certainly should be done by the time that thing's done. 522 is already done. Where are the poles running just that one short block?
I am not sure off the top of my head.
So I mean, it just makes sense to me, I mean, if you've got 181st done, you've got 522 done, those little short streets should just be taken care of themselves, certainly when they get redeveloped.
And what the 522 project does is it goes, it'll underground on 522 and it'll go part way up the block between 522 and 181st and you'll have a new terminal pole.
And then 181st gets done and it goes down part of the way down the block with one pole. So hopefully, when that property on that street gets redeveloped, the developer would get rid of that one pole.
And Chris, we had a discussion about a scenario where you have a single commercial lot that develops, say, you could say, look on 182nd there between 68th and 73rd, pick one of those skinny lots there. If just one lot redevelops, it doesn't necessarily make sense to have that one underground, would it? Because they'd still have terminal poles on either side. We had this conversation, I can't remember where we landed.
Yeah, I'm not remembering it that, I'm not remembering that. Well, what you can't do, I don't think, is require one property to underground in front of another. So if even that skinny property didn't underground, it would, probably wouldn't happen, because any undergrounding requires trenching and putting it in the ground with conduit. And so it is part of, it ends up being part of the frontage improvement. And it, but it would look really weird in the interim because you would have a terminal pole on each side of that skinny piece.
That's my point.
So it's hard because if you do want undergrounding, you are going to get some weird interim stuff.
But we're talking about 65th, 65th, 67th.
The situation I was talking about was example on 182nd where you have those skinny little lots.
Zach wrote me a note that makes a lot of sense and we could, at our discretion, have them put conduit in, because they still will have to underground on the private property being redeveloped, that's one of the onsite requirements citywide. And if we had them put, install the conduit in the ground along their frontage, that would make sense, they can come and pull that, just pull the wires later.
That's a good solution. That makes perfect sense.
Zach's always thinking, even at this late hour.
Well, you're not being short-sighted tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we, okay. What's he's recommending?
So what all these mean is when we bring you the, still a draft document in September, we'll just be formalizing, that doesn't mean we can't change our mind later, but as of, you know, when you get the holistic draft document, these are the changes that we'll, we'll make.
All right. So thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so there's two of us that have to be up at about four o'clock in the morning tomorrow, so, Mr. City Manager?
I'll talk fast, I have three things.
Bill, fast.
Three things. Sound Transit 3, the Sound Transit Board is going to meet this Thursday at 1:30 PM at Union Station. If you can possibly make it, really encourage you to attend, we need a good, solid Kenmore showing. And when you come, the 522 Transit Now Coalition will have a T-shirt there for you to put on, a yellow T-shirt with a 522 Transit Now logo on it. So if, Bill, if you could come, 1:30, Union Station this Thursday. Come for, right around 11:30 or 1:30, and if you could stay for even 45 minutes, that would make an impact. Also, this afternoon, Chris Overleas and I met with King County Metro staff to talk about their alternative services program. King County Executive Dow Constantine brought this up to us when we met, when the mayor and I met with him. They have about $10 million right now for alternative services and what they're defining that is in this current round of funding is two-year pilot programs. And what we came up with is town-around shuttles for Kenmore, because Metro's saying, hey, we understand our park, parking rides are full, but we're not building more parking, so it's more about local routes. And so we talked about, to them about this idea of using some of this pilot money to do a two-year town-around shuttle. They seemed to like that idea. The, the main thing is they wanted to know that we were interested and I told them yes. So they'll have a community conversation about this in the fall and if it gains momentum and traction and sounds feasible, then it could be implemented in the spring, but that's, I'm not counting my eggs yet. Lastly, I saw an email about emissions testing for heavy industrial. So this next Monday night, you'll have a second public hearing about proposed and heavy industrial regulations. And one of the things is, one of the things we're proposing is to have a regulatory business license, that's one of the things that you've discussed already and it's going to move forward again for the second public hearing. But one of the questions we got was, could, as a part of the regulatory license, we require these industries to monitor and test their emissions? And so that was a bit of a head-scratcher for me, but I forwarded the email to Rod Cosaguma, our attorney, and you might have some quick thoughts on this?
Very quick. The Clean Air Act states that the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency rules supersede any city rules concerning the control and enforcement of air pollution. So I would propose that we take a look at two issues. One is, are there Clean Air Agency rules governing the emissions from smokestacks in our industry so that we can determine if there is a supersession of, of any possible city rules? And the other is whether old businesses are exempt from or grandfathered against any city regulations, because that is one of the implications of one of the emails I saw from a Clean Air Agency person, is that the person said, well, if, if a company was started before the Clean Air Act, that they might not have to comply with the regulations. So we need to take a look at those two issues.
Timing-wise, can you look at those issues?
I guess we'll have to try to do that by Monday.
Quickly.
We don't have any regulations on it yet, though.
Quick, just a quick question for you. So part of what we were doing, though, with the regulatory license was folding in outside agencies' requirements into our codes that we could enforce. So let's say Puget Sound Clean Air Agency has things on the book, we know they're not enforcing because they're understaffed and under, and underfunded. If we were just to fold in their, their current regulations for emissions?
Okay.
Could we then make it part of the license and enforce on our own?
Oh, I haven't thought about that question. So, so you're wondering whether we can just say that if the Clean Air Agency does not enforce its regulations, we're adopting their regulations and we can enforce it too?
It seems like that, well, seems like that is what we were doing with some other parts of the regulatory license, if I remember conversations correctly.
Three of our regulations are what I can call nuisance regulations, because the Clean Air Act says
Right.
that local jurisdictions can pass nuisance regulations that are different from the control of air pollution. So we can, that's why many of our, actually, three, I think, of our proposed ordinances are nuisance characterizations, or they're nuisance ordinances.
But, but we're taking their noise regulation verbatim, putting it into our code so we can enforce on it correctly, correct?
In one circumstance, yes.
Okay.
But that's, I wanted to clarify for everyone that what that is, is we're saying to the industry or company, you are responsible for complying with the noise decibel levels of state law, if there are any that apply, and you need to show us a plan as to how you're going to show compliance with those state regulations. There was a letter from CEMEX that implied that, well, we don't have the expertise to determine whether they are complying with the noise levels, but that's not what the ordinance proposes. The ordinance proposes that the company come to us with a plan as to how the company is going to comply with the decibel levels.
So is there something kind of creative like that that we can do with emissions, possibly?
And I haven't been asked to take a look at that.
Okay, well, I'm just tossing that out there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on that, if you don't mind, on the, I, I know this may be a little bit, if needs to save it for next week, that's fine, but if, because they're a legal non-conforming use, if they do any changes at all, is there a way that we can tie the fact that they may make any changes to their existing equipment or structures there to bring them up to, if they're grandfathered, grandfathered under an older standard, that we can require them to bring it up to the current standard?
I believe we can do it carefully. We have to be very careful as to what we say an extensive remodel or extensive expansion is.
I'm, I'm thinking any remodel or any expansion.
If they, if they add a piece of air pollution equipment, I'd say that we shouldn't say that that triggers all of the other requirements.
But can we? I mean, I'm just.
For significant remodels or expansions?
I'm just saying if they're going to, every time they improve it, they're extending the economic life of the business. And I'm, I'm trying to say, how do you, how do you prevent that from happening?
We'd have to draft a carefully crafted ordinance that says, okay, when these things happen, these things constitute a material substantial change to the business and because of that, we can now make the business comply with current regulations.
Okay.
We'd have to, we'd have to work on that.
All right, thank you.
Now, I'm assuming that doesn't have to be prepared by this Monday, because that would be quite, quite a project. Okay.
But it does kind of fold into the discussion.
It does. Then there's nothing that says you can't pass some ordinances on Monday and consider others in September.
Anything else?
Just a reminder, no council meetings in August and, and I will be out of town for a couple of weeks in the first half of August.
Comments, initiatives? Councilmember Smith?
Nothing, Ted.
Councilmember Sperry? Councilmember Herbig? Nothing. Councilmember Danuski?
I'm going to beg you all to help at Play Day, but not right now, because I'm smarter than that.
Councilmember Van Ness?
I'll pass.
Me too. We're adjourned.
I think that's a first, man. Hey, that's got to be a first.
If I'm lucky, I get four hours sleep.